That's big push. Okay, tell me and be sure you announce when you're starting the meeting.
Got the last person joining now, so hang tight for a second. And Jesse, I will also make you co-host. There we go.
Okay.
All right, everyone is in and you should be good to go.
Are we there? Okay. Welcome, everyone. We're gonna start our City of Livingston Planning Board meeting. It's April 7th. The time is 5:33. Stacy, welcome back, everybody. This evening, we will be discussing the last three chapters for review of the draft growth policy. Those chapters will be Chapter 9, Public Facilities. My camera came off. Sorry, you guys. Here I am. Chapter 10, Intergovernmental Coordination. Chapter 12, Implementation. Then we'll go through a discussion on revisiting the items, the readability, the cleanup. And then the schedule for next meeting, which is April 21st. We will start with a roll call and approval of the minutes, which I probably should have done 30 seconds ago, but let's do it. Okay, roll call. Brian Conkle.
Here.
Tori Lyons.
Here.
Stacy Jovic.
Here.
Taya Cromley.
Here.
Shannon Holmes.
Present.
Melissa Newt.
Here.
And Jesse Wilcox is also here, along with Matthew Menard, Deputy City Planner. Thanks, everybody. Can I get a motion to approve the last meeting's minutes?
Second to the last one.
This is Brian. I make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Taya, okay, let's vote. Brian.
For.
Tori.
For.
Stacy.
For.
Taya.
For.
Shannon.
For.
Melissa.
For.
And I am also for. Okay, great. So we have approved the last meeting minutes. Brian made the motion and Taya made the second. Stacy, you put my brain on. Okay. We are gonna start off with general public comments. These comments will be limited to three minutes. Please, I'll set the timer on my phone and hold it up so you can see it. These comments are to be made on anything that the planning board has jurisdiction over. Also, please hold comments that you have on any of the agenda items until we get to that item on the agenda. This is just general public comment on on the growth policy or anything that the planning board has jurisdiction on. So if you have a comment that you'd like to make now, go ahead and either raise your hand and we will try and find you. Or if you can't raise your hand, just feel free to turn your camera on and unmute yourself. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Matthew, are you? Okay, second call for general public comment. Third call for general public comment. Okay, we're gonna close public comments. We are going to get started. Matthew, thank you again for putting together the packet and the memo. Would you like to kick us off? Matthew, with any comments you have on the memo or anything you want to address to the group before we start?
Yes, two things. I think this is probably the first time. There are a couple of changes that you requested that have not been made in between the two meetings, one of which is the ACS. You had asked me to add manufactured homes to Table 5.1. The American Community Survey does not give any information on where those fit in. So I'm not sure if they are considered mobile homes under the American Community Survey or if they are considered single-family residences. So I didn't want to put anything inaccurate in the table, so I have not made that change. The other one that has not been finalized, I reached out to the library and I have not heard back from them on updating that section. So I have not updated that yet. Hopefully, I will hear back from them soon and we can get that in before the final recommendation. The other thing I want to address, and this isn't something I particularly want to address, but I think it needs to be addressed. We've had several instances in the last week or so of people trying to contact the planning board basically the planning board members directly through their personal means of communication, either being work email, work telephone, home telephone, home email. This is not something that the public should be doing. We give them multiple ways to provide input on the planning board. That being the email link that's on the planning board webpage, the planning email, which is just planning@livingstonmontana.org, my email, which is mmenard@livingstonmontana.org. You can always submit mailed-in written comments or you can deliver, basically hand-deliver written comment to our office. Obviously, we also give time for public comment on every item and anything the planning board has jurisdiction over during the meeting. So I am requesting that the public does not try to send planning board members unsolicited, potentially harassing emails through their personal email, personal telephone, work email, work telephone. I will always pass anything you submit as public comment onto the planning board. So please do use those channels we give you to communicate with the planning board. Their job, and it's not a job, they are volunteers. It's hard enough as it is. They're making huge decisions and they've done an excellent job of representing the public. As we come to that final representation, they shouldn't feel like they're getting piled on by the community. So please do use those official communication channels we give you and don't seek out the planning board's personal emails. And please don't directly email the planning board, basically unsolicited, public comments or complaints or advice about the growth policy. And I think that is all I had to cover on that. I don't have anything specific. On Chapter 9, really, there's, these chapters are significantly lighter in proposed changes than the previous chapters and they tend to be a little bit shorter. So I don't have anything specific. On 9, 10, or 12, 10, I think Chapter 10 was the only chapter in the entire growth policy that there hasn't been any changes. Staff suggested changes. Otherwise, I will have a couple of things on readability cleanup and revisiting items, but we can cover that when we get to those items. So I am happy to move it off me and onto the planning board if you have any questions or on the public comment.
Hey, Matthew. Did the changes I have given you on the Chapter 9, do you need to go on any more detail with the other members on that or what you said so far suffice?
Let's discuss that after the public comment. And I can cover that if you want me to, but let's do public comment before we get into it.
Can I add something to what you said, Matthew, about commenting? So I understand as a commissioner that my role is a little bit different because I actually have a city email address and I'm gonna be seeing this again at the commission level. But anybody that wants to give comment, I would encourage you to give it to the whole commission at the meeting because I'm only 20% of the vote. I'm only one person on a five-person commission. So it's better, it's, I'm happy to hear your concerns, but it's better to give it to all the commissioners than just one commissioner. So I would just share that also. Thank you.
Okay.
If that, if that, if that's in line with what Matthew was saying too. Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Matthew or comments before we get started with public comment on Chapter 9? Okay, thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you to the community for showing up again tonight. We are going to start with public comment on Chapter 9, Public Facilities. Remember to please state your name and address for our minutes. You have three minutes to comment. Please keep your comments to Chapter 9. And if you have a comment, go ahead and raise your hand. And we will call you out. Okay, Mr. Frank Schroeder, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I'm Frank Schroeder. I'm Chair of the Friends of Park County. My address is 477 Mill Creek Road. And pray, a couple of comments on Chapter 9. One is to emphasize the importance of making sure that the provision of public facilities like roads, drinking water, and wastewater disposal is coordinated with your overall compact growth policy rather than deviating from it. It is all too common for new roads, sewers, and water lines to be planned and funded completely separately from policies intended to govern the form of development. The need to provide after-the-fact connections to sewage treatment systems for the Green Acres subdivision illustrates the problem of the lack of coordination between public facilities and a growth policy. Another issue about the consistency of the overall growth policy with public facilities concerns the use of very different growth projections in different chapters. In Chapter 3, you approved using a 1% to 2% range in forecasted growth as a basis for your planning and policies. But in Chapter 9, a 2.6% growth policy has been used as a basis for planning $17 million in wastewater system improvements. We understand the argument that we do not want to risk sewage contamination of the Yellowstone River. And so that might justify our higher growth forecast. But then why doesn't that argument apply to other urgent needs such as plans for housing, drinking water, roads, parks, et cetera? Doesn't that mean revisiting the growth forecast range in Chapter 3? We believe the growth policy should be based on a consistent set of underlying assumptions and not use significantly different assumptions in different chapters. Also want to comment that Friends of Park County and PCEC's testimony that coming up are aligned regarding priorities for sewage system improvements to serve existing development and future infill and redevelopment areas inside the city limits, including questioning the priority assigned to the West Underpass Crossing Loop and the value treating stormwater to reduce pollution of the Yellowstone River. Just to close, I really want to give you a heartfelt thanks for treating public testimony with respect and when you thought it was appropriate, making changes to the draft growth policy based on that testimony. You have created a positive dynamic of encouraging additional public participation that focuses on offering specific construction suggestions. Thank you very, very much for all that you have done.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, does anybody else have any public comment on Chapter 9? I don't see any hands up. Matthew, I don't know if you do. Second call on public comment for Chapter 9, Public Facilities. Okay, last call. If you can't raise your hand, you're more than welcome to take yourself off mute. Okay, we're gonna close public comment on Chapter 9. Thank you very much for both written and public comment. Matthew, you didn't have anything from the memo you wanted to introduce for Chapter 9, correct? Okay, board, who would like to get started with questions or comments on Chapter 9?
It's not all jump at once.
I know, I was gonna say, Shannon, you already did your stuff, huh? I have a couple if nobody else does.
I'm relying on Shannon to do all the heavy lifting on this one.
I have a couple, Jesse, too. I was waiting for Shannon also.
Shannon, do you have anything? What's that? I was just gonna see if Shannon had anything.
Yeah, so, you know, I alluded to this in Matthew's kind of overview. I've provided Matthew some redline comments and really they're, they're just to make some, it's to improve the accuracy in a lot of the statements in this chapter. So I've done that. I'm comfortable that my fellow planning board members would approve those and, you know, if Matthew wants to, I guess, explain what I've done, at least from an administrative perspective as the Public Works Director, as far as process moving forward, I can open the floor to him, but I've taken time to go through and make sure that at least the introduction on the various public facilities is accurate.
Just to add a little bit to what Shannon said, I think every single one of the changes that he has suggested are basically data errors in the introduction and there are no specific suggested changes to the goals, strategies, and objectives. So they're basically editorial changes. They're not, we're not sort of going around the planning board and changing, changing goals without bringing them to you.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, an example is we only operate and maintain six lift stations. And as you can see in Section A, it mentions seven, so I've made redlines on correcting information like that.
Perfect. Thank you, Shannon. Okay, I know, Melissa, you had some stuff. Do you want to go first?
Sure. Okay, so the first thing I noted was on, it's on page 83, under a Public Wastewater Facilities. It's in that last full paragraph. There's one couple sentence, or one sentence in particular that jumped out at me and that's furthermore, the city is expecting large commercial growth along West Park Street.
Can you tell us which number paragraph you're in?
Yeah, it's the third paragraph and under A.
I know, but it's, I'm sorry, the first paragraph?
Third.
Third paragraph?
Just over halfway, like two-thirds of the way into the paragraph.
It's like the second to last sentence, Stacy.
Oh, I see. I found it.
Yeah. I just have questions about that, I guess.
You mean about whether it's West Park Street, if that's an accurate description of the only place that development is gonna happen?
It's more like sometimes the city staff know what's happening before the rest of us, which is totally legitimate because developers go to them first because that's just the process. But how can we say it in a way that, I don't know, it just, I feel like it's gonna be one of those things that's shocking to people and sounds like there's a conspiracy when there's not. So so maybe instead of expecting, I don't know, like expecting sounds like there's developers knocking on the door and everybody knows about it except for the public. I wonder if it can, we could say anticipating or I don't know what better language is. I just, some things jump out at me is the public isn't gonna like this wording because it sounds like something that's not. Is there a different way to say it? Or Matthew and Shannon, do you know something that we don't know?
So if I may take a stab at this, so when I read that sentence and I understand your concern with that statement, I do think, feel it's made in reference of the following sentence that talks about the anticipated increased flows are expected to exceed the design capacity of Centennial Lift Station. So the Centennial Lift Station serves all the commercial businesses and residential areas along Park Street, basically south of Rogers Lane. So in essence, if you look at our strategic plan, certainly upgrading the Centennial Lift Station is in that and similar to the project the commission proved last night on the Fifth Street sewer upsize, Centennial Lift Station is the next priority for the city to upsize that lift station. And really, the driving factor is, is the Eagles Landing condo development behind Albertson's. And then you have the Murdochs and Taco Bell, Domino's Pizza, and there's still some commercial property or at least acreage in that area that's been annexed by the city that, that we expect at some time when the demand is large enough, there will be another lift station south of Billman Creek. So in essence, that's, that's how I interpret that sentence. And if the planning board wants to reword it, based on my explanation, I'd be fully supportive of that.
Oh, I saw Brian's hand go up too. I'm not the chair, but I am curious what other people think, if there's another way that it could be worded.
Yeah, there's just a general comment. You know, all along Park Street, we did, in our growth maps, we did designate those as higher, you know, higher capacity locations. And so sticking with the, you know, theme of infill, I think it's, yeah, it is, it is expected based on if we are expecting growth, then that is a good place where we expect it to happen to go meet all those goals. I'm okay with going with anticipated. I would hope somebody wouldn't read too much into expected. I mean, again, I think the whole, I think the whole document does say we do expect growth, but how we manage it is what's important. But I'd be okay with anticipated.
Let's add one thing quickly. I think the reason that they didn't use the word anticipated because, is because the first two words of the sentence are the anticipated. So maybe a different word might be appropriate.
I was wondering, maybe could we also just refer to what the land use designation is so it doesn't sound as like it came out of nowhere, maybe?
It's a good idea.
Or also by adding not just commercial, but the residential component of it because the, the higher density residential that's there is a significant factor. So it's not, it's not just commercial.
And that
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and that residential was planned a long time before we were on the planning board, that Eagles Landing stuff that's being developed now was before, I don't know, was it before your time, Shannon? It might have been before all of our time. So that's just been in waiting.
Maybe the word that's really the bothersome one is large. You know, instead of saying, expecting large commercial growth, just expecting some commercial and residential growth.
I was gonna say, just is expecting.
Then it's not inflammatory, you know, it's, it's, it's the planned growth, maybe.
What about expecting growth and getting large and commercial? Furthermore, the city is expecting growth along West Park Street, sorry. All right, then I'm gonna make a motion so we can move on. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we edit that sense to remove the words large and commercial.
I will second that.
Okay, Section A, Stacy, page 83.
I got it.
Got it? Okay. Melissa made the motion. Shannon seconded. Let's vote. Ready? Brian?
For.
Tori?
For.
Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
And I'm also for. Okay, motion passes. Do you have another one, Melissa?
Yes, I do. And Shannon might have caught this already and talked to Matthew about it. So the next thing is on page 84. It says 16 properties in the city utilize septic systems. Shannon, did you already redline that one? Because Green Acres and potentially other pending annexations also have septic systems, so it will be much more than 16.
It's reasonable to add 90, 90 to that total, just based on our annexation of Green Acres last February.
And then there's another potential annexation that might happen before this is final, that has a septic system. It's not residential.
Yeah, and I, maybe that one, if and when that occurs, that could be an amendment to the document after, but just my thoughts.
Just flagging that, just flagging that. Okay.
So do we need that to be a motion to change it from 16 to 90 at least, or is that an editorial change?
106.
Or 106, what? Oh, yeah, 106.
Over 100.
Over 100. There you go. That covers it. Shall we make a motion?
I don't know. Matthew, do we need a motion for that? I see you shaking your head no.
No, it's just an accuracy update, so I can make that change.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next section that's on my mind is on page 86, Utter Stormwater Management. I had the good fortune of being on a commission meeting last night where we talked about stormwater. Or not stormwater, we talked about wastewater, but I've had the good fortune of hearing a lot about stormwater. Shannon, do you think that this is adequate? This, the, the section on stormwater, because there's so much coming up and I just want to make sure we have it covered as people change on the planning board and on the commission that we're in a good place for the real needs of Livingston.
Well, again, I, I've been looking at this from a higher perspective, Commissioner Newt's and I, you know, obviously happy that one of the recommendations is to look at creating a stormwater utility and, and so that's really where I've kind of focused my efforts. And I'm happy that, that it's in there. But, you know, obviously, we could add a lot more to each of these sections to really fully explain each of our facilities and, you know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions. Again, I'm, I'm not looking at it at such a granular level.
Okay. So I have a question. When you call, when you ask for creating a stormwater utility, what does that necessarily encompass? Is that a strategic plan or prioritization or what?
Is that directed to me? Well, obviously, we, the city administration has provided a PowerPoint and presentation to the city commission and made a recommendation. Obviously, as we update the strategic plan, that needs to be included, certainly in the five-year plan. And it'll be, it'll be a, I'm not gonna say, it could have the potential to be a long process just so we could basically address what creating that utility is gonna result in for our community. But a lot of that has actually already been included in our, in our initial presentation to the commission and even recommending, you know, a nominal monthly rate for that to create about $600,000 of funds, you know, on an annual basis.
So I guess my question is, would, would your sentence that you have in there that you added the redline about the sentence after that, is that a description of what stormwater utility would encompass? I'm just trying to make sure that it's clear as to what the stormwater utility is about, if it's described there, since we just want the public to know what it is. You know in your head what it is.
I, I do and I'm, I'm trying to figure, I mean, I'm trying to come up with a wording that would not be too lengthy, that would describe it. So I'm, again, I'm open to suggestions. I personally feel comfortable with the redline statement and I feel like, you know, it's really the city administration and our job to educate everybody on, on that if it's indeed a priority assigned by the city commission.
I, you know, I, I'm glad to hear you say that you're comfortable with this, Shannon. I, this is a really important topic and I do, Stacy, think that the next sentence is somewhat descriptive of stormwater projects, although one important part is the sentence preceding it about this MS4 requirement, which I don't think we need to go into great detail on what that is in the growth policy. Somebody can just call Public Works if they're super into stormwater management. But it's a really specific and, it's a really specific requirement as Livingston grows and it will cost, it will cost the residents that live here. So it's really important to plan for it so that we're not, you know, taken off guard and having really high fees. So the, the idea of a utility, I think, is just sort of a community resilience approach where we're really planning for it instead of having to deal with it. Where we're really planning for it instead of having to deal with it retroactively. That's just my take on it. So I, if you're comfortable with this, Shannon, I mean, I feel good about that. I just. I want to make sure we're in a good place. We don't have to have the same conversations over and over, because it's an important project.
So, so just to clarify, then, the stormwater utility is a fee. A category to collect fees to pay for future wastewater programs.
Stormwater pro- program.
Or a stormwa- storm stormwater programs is what you're what you're saying. So.
And it's it's just a way to like allocate money towards specific expensive projects so that we're not taking from other pockets of money in the budget in the future. It's a way to just like budget the money in a way that's. It makes it better for all of us, I think, in the big picture, so we're not like swapping funds at the last minute when emergencies happen. That's just my take on it. So if you're good with that, I'm good with it. I just wanted to check in with you at this meeting. Okay, moving on. Okay, on page eighty-seven. Under energy sources and renewable energy. This is editorial. If you've already got this, please let me know. The first two, first sentence, the city of Livingston is served by two electric providers, Park Electric Cooperative. Provides electric service primarily. And the unincorporated areas and Northwestern Energy provides electric and natural gas service primarily within the city limits. So I would say that this sentence is contradictory, because if the city of Livingston. By definition, is not the unincorporated areas, right?
So Commissioner Newt's, again, this this was one of the accuracy red lines that I provided to.
Perfect.
Matthew and and indeed Park Electric does provide electric um. To uh properties within the city limits, and it's primarily on that northwest side in the Discovery Vista. Uh, west end of Star Edition area.
Thank you, Shannon. Then we can move along from that.
And I don't think that was very clearly written here. I mean, for for the general public.
Cool. I think Shannon and Matthew then, I trust they'll fix that. Thank you. The next thing. Is on page eighty-eight. The several public buildings. Including the water reclamation facility and over twenty-five local residences in Livingston utilize rooftop solar power. You guys with me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think that should be updated. I don't know if this meant Shannon's Shannon. Shannon already got to this one too, but there's a lot more public buildings and. I think a lot more than twenty-five residents residences, I think um, a quick call to somebody at YBCC could probably get. A more um up-to-date. Description of the solar power being utilized in Livingston, just because they're tracking that data. So I don't know if that requires a motion, or if that's something Shannon, or I mean, sorry, Matthew can just. Do it.
I was wondering if um Sarah Stans had submitted some information today on that. But I one was wondering how you could verify the source as far as, you know, she said around fifty homes, fifty private homes.
Well, Sarah's like a co-chair too, I think, on YBCC, so I'm sure that, I'm sure that. But I know that they've been doing solar work.
Right.
For years, and so. And they've helped get it solar on a lot more than just one public building, so I think um. It'd be nice to just see a more comprehensive list.
If it's all right with the planning board, when I update uh the data, I'm gonna continue to use approximates just because it changes so quickly. So I'll probably, I I think the public comment from Sarah had said over fifty, I'll probably just use that number for private res- residences, if you're all okay with that.
Yeah, and there's more public buildings than just the out at Public Works, you know, like the library and the new city hall, for example, and then. Right. Cool. If you're, if, I mean, I'm, if you're comfortable expanding it, I don't need to make a motion if you're gonna make it more accurate.
Can we just have a motion on adding the additional public buildings, since that is an addition, and it's not just a data update?
Yep, I'll make a motion that. Under section E. Uh, Matthew just updates the public buildings in the last sentence of the session.
Brian, I second.
Thank you.
Brian?
For.
Tori? Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
Uh, and Jesse, for, motion passes. What's next, Melissa?
Alright, solid waste and recycling, that's the next section. Again, Shannon might have already done this. Last night, we just voted on green cans at the commission. So I think a line could be added in that last paragraph, or a sentence could just be added. About green cans.
I was wondering, Melissa, if it could just also be, instead of at the end, put in for a fee. Uh, and for an additional fee for green can service or something?
That's why I was saying like something in the last sentence, because they talk about residential garbage fees and commercial garbage. I don't. It doesn't matter to me really where it is, as long as we're just making sure it's. In there, because I know the city's been working on that for at least a year, and it finally just got voted on, so. Yeah, and then I wonder if we want to put a sentence in.
I think we need a motion on that, don't we?
Oh, we do? Okay, thank you.
Maybe in the first paragraph or something.
Well, I'm not even gonna get that specific, if it's okay. I'm just gonna make a motion and um. Section F that. We include information about the green can program.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote on that one. Brian?
Just, just a second though, um, a little discussion on the green cans. I I would like to have that as a green can, it's a a fee service, it's not, because before this year, it was. In incorporating in your, so I like in the motion that it's it's a fee service, an additional fee service for green cans.
I'm, I think that that would be included in the green can program, because the only one we have now is for a fee, because we just voted on it.
Just to say on a section on green and the the green can program.
Yeah, I just like, the only program we have now is this new one, like this one for a fee where everyone can have access to it for a fee. Instead of the luck of the draw if your property had a can. So I think just, my motion, I just wanted to make it general, because I want it. I don't want to like forget something, and I want Matthew to just like be able to put in a sentence, and I know he knows what it is, because. They've been working on this. The city's staff has been working on this for like a year. So I think it's, are you comfortable with that? Like you'll, you'll, you can do an accurate description, like in a sentence. Then I don't think I need to make it more specific, the motion personally, but.
Sorry. Who was the second on that? Oh, Shannon, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion before we vote? Sorry, I jumped the gun there. Okay. Brian?
For.
Tori? Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
Um, and I'm also for. Okay, so that motion passes.
The last thing. On my mind is, I wonder if we could add. A sentence. See, I don't know if this is necessary or not, or if it's too detailed, but I know that Public Works is thinking beyond green cans and recycling, and they're thinking also about. Um, in addition to green waste, thinking about brown waste, like. Woody material and also exploring food waste. Like, I know that Public Works is thinking a lot beyond like what's in this document, so I wonder if we should like add a sentence on. On that. Curious what your thoughts are.
So I guess you have to expand a little bit more, because um, yeah, I was reading. What are you considering brown waste versus? What what what's the ultimate goal? To reduce the amount of waste, but.
It's to keep things out of the landfill so that we're not spending so much on garbage. I mean, that's the ultimate goal is like. When you start separating waste, landfill waste from. Organic, like other kinds of organic waste, it keeps our, it keeps our garbage, our garbage fees lower. When we can um clean up the system in that way.
Hey, Melissa. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's okay.
I was just saying, you know, I think maybe in this second, do you think in this second paragraph under section F? Or says the city offers a variety of recycling options, you know, maybe somewhere in in here, and is looking. Uh, to increase those options in the future. And we even could say which may include brown waste and food waste. Or or we don't have to even limit it to that, but just could be looking into, you know, additional. Options in the future. Go ahead, Shannon.
Madam Chair, um, I I. Again, I think this is a great discussion and just try to keep things moving. I feel like there's a strategy. Um, nine point one. Uh, three point three, promote at-home recycling and composting initiative does to to divert waste from landfills. In in essence, I I feel like that's uh covers what we're talking about, so I don't know if you want to just maybe add that sentence into that. Just in one of those paragraphs, or or if we all feel like that that eject objective nine point. One point three covers what we're talking about.
Melissa, I I I think I understand what you're, my understanding of what you're trying to get at is um. You want to, you want to make sure that we are incorporating those specific future. Recycling options. Do you, do you think those words should go in a paragraph or a strategy?
No, Shannon just inspired me to make two other motions, and I'll move on. Thanks, Shannon. Okay, I'm gonna keep moving forward, and then I'll get to those when I get to those. Okay, oh, is everybody good with me? Okay. Under section G, broadband services. It's just an editorial thing. I know that, for example, spectrum, these numbers are wrong, because I can test my internet at home. And I did it today, and I did it when I first read this growth policy, and both times it was like more than double the speeds listed. So I just think it'd be great to make those accurate.
Those numbers come directly from the FCC. I can see if there's updated numbers. I don't know how often they update them. Um, but we can try to look at and see if there are more recent numbers.
Or maybe just. Putting a date like according to the FCC on in this year or something. Do I need, do I need to make a motion? Okay. Thank you. Alright, can I keep moving?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Alright, strategy nine point one point three point two.
Say that one more time, Melissa.
Yep, strategy nine point one point three point two. I'm on page ninety-one.
Okay.
I would just add one word to the sentence. Develop an inter- internal policy and guidelines for expanding waste reduction and recycling in coordination with the county. Because I think that includes the stuff that I was getting at, that I've heard Public Works mention. Thank you, Shannon. So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Taya, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
For.
Tori? Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
And I'm also for, so your motion passes. Okay.
Um, the next strategy, nine point one point three point three. Um, I'm gonna make a motion just to add a word again. So I would have it read promote at-home recycling and community composting initiatives to divert waste from landfills. So it's just adding the word community in front of composting.
I'll second.
Great. Any comment on that from the board before we vote? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
For.
Tori? Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa?
For.
Okay, and I'm also for, so that motion passes. Do you have one more, Melissa, or more?
Yeah, I just, I think, you know, we had some mention of the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Not being accurate. I think we had some public comment on that. I think. I think there's a strategy on taking, yep, okay, so strategy nine point two point one point six already. Says um investigate updating that plan. So I think that's good, and I also just want to say I really like the strategy nine point one point three point five. This community education initiative to um. Just help educate the public on recycling. I think that's really good, and I'm glad to see it in there, and that's all that I have on this section. Thank you for your patience.
Good thing. Thank you. Um, anybody else uh from the board want to pop in on chapter nine? Tori?
One. See, I think it's on page ninety-two. Uh, objective nine point two point one point three. It states, review and update the current community profile and future demographic trends to ensure. The level of service provided by the current network of neighborhood parks, trails, and programming is adequate. I'd like to add one word to that um, so that it says adequate and equitable. I think it's important that that there's equal access to parks throughout the community and not just where. Affluent folks live, so I'd like to add equitable to that, and I'm happy to discuss, and I'm happy to make a motion.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you make a motion, or do you want to discuss it first?
I didn't make a motion, um, but if there's no discussion, I will.
I I just had one question. I think somebody else brought this up, and that it, a word. Another word that was suggested was inclusive. And, but is that a different point than you're making?
Necessarily, I think uh equitable is maybe a. I don't know, it's a word that I use. I don't think they're necessarily mean different things.
I like equitable. Any other discussion?
Okay, I will make a motion that we cha- we change the wording on strategy nine point two point one point three. To include saying trails and programming is adequate and equitable.
Second. Was that Melissa? Sorry. Yeah, okay. Um, any discussion before we vote? Okay, let's go for it. Brian?
For.
Tori?
For.
Stacy?
For.
Taya? Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa? And I am for. Okay, motion passes. Did you have another one, Tori?
That's it for me.
Okay.
Oh, actually, there was one thing, there was one thing that I didn't write down, but I'm remembering. In the discussion, or there was a list of the parks, it has the types of parks, community, neighborhood, linear and special use. I don't necessarily know what. I mean, I can assume what linear is, um, but I don't know necessarily what special, what a special use park is. Um, so I found, it confused me, um, and I looked around, I didn't see any indication in. Um, so I found, it confused me. Um, and I looked around, I didn't see any indication in. Uh, the growth policy, what those things meant. So, I guess, as someone. Who knows about planning, I don't know what those terms mean. I don't know how helpful they are. Um, but if, if I'm missing something, Matthew, if you have insight into what those different types of parks are. I, I can learn from that.
I think they may come from the Parks and Trails Master Plan. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Um, there is a description of different sort of park types as they're. Labeled in the Parks and Trails Master Plan, and I know that community and neighborhood at least are included in those. I think special use are as well. So I think that's where the, that specific language comes from is actually a different plan that the city's adopted. Yeah, and there are just pretty detailed descriptions of sort of what that means in the context of that Trails and Parks Master Plan.
Without that context, I still don't think that column is giving the reader. Additional information, so. Um. I don't feel strongly about this, but I think that was something that um confused me as I was going through the chapter.
Where were you reading that at?
Oh, pardon me.
Where, what page was that on?
That's on page eighty-seven. Um, my apologies for not starting with that.
It's table nine point three Stacy.
Well, I, I know, I see the table, but I can't see, I can't find the wording that he was describing is what I was looking for.
It's special use.
In the description before.
Oh.
In the type.
It mine says parks within the city of Livingston, so where's the special use sex sentence?
It's a value for the type column, so at the bottom of.
Oh, I see, I see what you mean. Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a que, question while we're on this table? Um. What are we, what's the name of the Van Shell Park? Like. Is that, that's not Sacagawea. It has a different name.
Miles Park, isn't it? Mike, Mike Webb Park, I believe, or Miles, Miles Park.
Miles Park.
Miles Park.
And then where's the skate park? Is that in, is that in Miles Park?
Oh, that's a.
It is, it is in Miles Park. It, I mean, it, it has its own name.
But it's, it's considered a community and not a special use, like the soccer field's a special use. And the dog park is special use, but the skate park, I don't know, there's some confusion and I don't know. These categories for sure.
How about we delete the second column if there's no value added?
I think that makes sense. I'd make a motion.
I, I, I don't know whether I wanna delete the column. I think it just needs to have what, have the identify. Had done identifying factor, special use soccer fields, skate park.
You guys don't even have the Bozeman Park on here. Don't you know the Bozeman Park?
The Bozeman Connector Trail Park?
No, that tiny little triangle by Park Street and Ninth Street. Do you guys know what I'm talking about? Shannon probably has, Shannon probably has to maintain that, like tiny strip of grass and trees. That's not even on here. What kind of park is that?
Ask Parks, is it, is this from?
That's the Marks In and Out Park.
No, it's not. It's, it's not even Marks In and Out. It's like a postage, you'd have to put postage stamp type park, I think. You'd have to give it a special for category and measure the acreage, be like. Point zero zero some acres.
There's a monument on it. I think there's a little placard or a monument or something.
There's a sign. Bozeman Park. Can we include that? That's, that's an inaccuracy. It should be on there.
What was motion? Sorry.
I was going to make a motion that we remove the type column in table nine point three because of. The confusion that it's causing.
I second. Oh, sorry.
That's it. Thank you.
Second.
Uh, okay, anybody else wanna discuss that?
I, I just wonder if, I mean. I, I don't understand. Well, if you look at it from somebody from out of town. What? Never mind, never mind. Okay.
Yeah, in my opinion, the important piece of this one is how many parks are there and how many acres are there? Maybe is, and, and maybe we're missing a point zero zero five eight acre. Any other discussion before we vote?
I was gonna say, it could even be complicated. Are those necessarily mutually exclu, exclusive? Like, could, could they fall into?
Like, no, cause you could do lots of things on the north side park besides, besides play soccer. However, it's a special use park, so I. Yeah, I'm with you Taya.
Well, and, and do you also, and do you also include the um golf course driving range? It's not really a park, it's a golf course driving range, but it is owned by the city. So is that a park technically?
I believe.
And the Polo Grounds, are they technically a park?
Because we have a lease agreement that specifies that they have exclusive use to it, so. I, it's city property, but I wouldn't.
It's not a park.
But I.
Yeah.
Well, and it's not on here, so that's good. Okay. We're good, we're good on voting? Let's do it. Let's vote, see what happens. Um, Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Approved. A four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
No.
Melissa?
Four.
And I'm for. Okay, motion passes. Tori, anything else?
Fuck yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? I, I do have a few things, but does anybody wanna go before me?
I have one.
Oh, go ahead Stacy.
Okay. Um, I'll start at the beginning. I think Melissa covered quite a few of them. Um. But, I wanted to um. Know on G broadband services. Um, does Wisp West cover the ETJ area? I mean, I know it serves the county, but it, as far as a broadband service, um, one of the three. I would say Wisp West's name should be on there. As a, another provider.
I think it even, does it even provide to some people in town?
In town?
It does.
I believe so.
Do you want a motion on that, Matthew, to include Wisp West?
I was, I'll. Do I have to make a mo, I'll make a motion to add Wisp West uh services to. The list under broadband services.
Perfect. Who wants to second that one?
Brian seconds.
Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion? Let's vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And I'm for, okay. Stacy, what else?
My other one is in regard to the last paragraph on broadband services. And I would like to propose to simplify that to um. Removing that entire paragraph to something that is like. There is fiber optic. Uh, internet service available, HFC network in Livingston, fiber backbone. Coex runs to subscribers and speed continue to increase. Several businesses have FTP. PFL Livingston Healthcare and Wisp West, the ETG area is covered primarily by, well, you don't need that. Okay, just cover that. So, in other words, instead of having all this detail, which some of it I believe is not. Necessarily accurate to a simple sentence that imply, that lets anybody know that we do have. Buried fiber optic cables in the alleys and that it is available. And. That um. It's a, a positive statement instead of kind of, I think we had some public comment that indicated that it wasn't. Completely accurate at this point. And I did speak with the person again, I happened to run into on the street. Um. And. I just thought it was important that the. Overall statement was that we do have fiber optic service available. And not that we didn't. Cause it kind of was reading that we in, in. Uh, up to, up to date on that.
How about, how about, if there's a suggestion, if I may, how about if we just say Livingston by comparison has limited. Residential areas, because I think that's accurate. I mean, you're right, they, they are expanding, but I'd say it's still limited, or we could put currently limited.
So when um. You say limited because, let's say out in Discovery Vista, how did, are you saying that they didn't put any fiber optics out there?
I, I don't know the answer to that. All I know is it's limited. You don't see it in many places in town, so I think that's an accurate description, limited.
Yeah, I don't believe that most of town has access to fiber optic internet service at this point. I think it's pretty, pretty severely limited within. Uh, city limits.
All my understanding was that it's buried, you just have to pay to have it taken to your house so that it's, it's, it's. Infrastructure is there, but you have to necessarily, you know. Just like the city, you have your water to the city water main. So it's there underground.
Stacy, I, I don't, I don't think that's an accurate statement. I mean, it is, it is in parts of town, but it's not, I don't think it's been widely. Um. I guess you guys would know from a permit perspective, Matthew or Shannon, but I don't, I haven't seen that much going in.
Well, and Stacy's not necessarily wrong. You could extend a network to your house, but you know, if you're. Ten blocks away from the current fiber optic cable, that's potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars to basically put in utilities for a whole section of the city. Um, that's not really a feasible thing to do for most people, uh to, unless it's, you know, within the, the right of way. Adjacent to their property, which I don't think is, is pretty common in, in the city right now.
Okay, um. I think the sentence though could just be, that whole paragraph could be streamlined. And maybe if you wanted to say. It is available. I mean, it just, it, you know what I mean? It's, it's like it's a negative statement when it's not necessarily a negative.
It is negative.
And that's different.
We don't have a lot of fiber optic cable.
Two, two individual places. True.
I think it's, I think it's an accurate assessment of what are, I mean, it's like, it's, it's kind of a matter of fact, sort of like, this is how big our water pipe is, this is how big our sewage is. This is how big our fiber is. It may be a plus or maybe a minus. If, if we're trying to make the point that we need to. Expand broadband, then, then I think it's accurate to say that it's limited in certain areas.
I agree. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I agree with Brian. I think um. This isn't like just a Livingston issue. This is like a rural community issue that rural communities are struggling with all over. The country is like in the west is um. Not having access the same way, more uh populated parts of the country have, so. It is negative.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'll just give you a notional that you can relate to. So the USDA building down past Murdochs on the left, three years ago, we tried to put fiber optic in there. And then they were gonna charge us five hundred thousand dollars to extend it from its current termination point. So it's, it's incredibly expensive and it's, and it's still limited, but it's getting better all the time.
Okay, well, did you want to add in that, that um Livingston Healthcare? And, well, it mentions PFL, but it doesn't mention Livingston Healthcare. And Wisp West have their own fiber optics. Do we want to include that at all?
Stacy, do you have a specific like? Just to move it along a little bit, do you have a motion you wanna make on this particular, like?
Well, obviously, this is not my forte. Of understanding all of the, the mega. Um, Watts and, and all of that. I just wanted it to be accurate and readable in general. So that was my goal, was to try to simplify it um and to have it be accurate, so. Um. If uh, if it comes down to just adding that um. Livingston Healthcare and Wisp West also have uh. Where is the note on PFL? In that paragraph? There. That printing for less is not the only business in the area with this service to add Livingston Healthcare and Wisp West. I'll make that mention. Add those two businesses.
Okay, that's your motion? To add Livingston Healthcare and Wisp West as, as additional businesses that have fiber optics?
Yes.
Does anybody wanna second that?
I. I think I'd like to amend it. I, I, I have no idea who has fiber optic and I'm not sure anybody does. And so I'm wondering if maybe instead we, instead of listing printing for less, we just list and there's some. Some limited. Companies or entities have it today or something like that. Uh, again, I, I'm not aware of who we have it, so I, I hate to. Call anybody out by name. So, so I'd, I'd make an amendment to, for, for to read um. Um. Sorry, let me find the sentence here again. I'd say Livingston by comparison. Has, this is how I'd write that sentence. Livingston by comparison has limited fiber, has limited. Fiber op, fiber access in the residential areas. And in the business areas, and I'd leave it at that. That's my motion for an amendment.
Said by comparison um has li, limited fiber optic access in. Residential and commercial? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I said business areas, but yeah, I think commercials.
And business areas.
I think commercials better in residential and commercial areas.
Okay.
May I ask any questions?
Yeah. Sure thing.
That first motion was never seconded, I don't think, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard a second.
I don't, I don't know if there was a second. I didn't hear one.
You can just make the motion, Brian.
Well, yeah, I was just, we can ask.
Since there wasn't a second.
Okay, so there wasn't a second. Well, I guess, you can call, sorry, I, I thought there was a second. We can call for a second and see if we.
Well, there was no seconds on, there were no seconds on anything yet, so I wonder if we can just ask Matthew, the best way to proceed.
Uh, two options. Stacy can withdraw her original motion and Brian can make his motion if Stacy is amenable to that. Otherwise, uh, we need to go back and.
I'll just withdraw my motion.
So now we just need a second on Brian. Yep.
I'm sorry. Second Brian.
Okay.
Second Brian's.
Sorry about that.
The fiber optic. Okay, any more discussion on this before we vote? Okay, let's do it. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon? Thumbs up?
Four.
Four. Melissa?
Four.
And I'll be four. Okay, motion passes. Stacy, do you have anything else you wanna talk about?
Um, no, I think. Um. Second. I'll check.
Oh, I wanted to uh discuss the, the comment on um funding for park space. That was brought up. Um, page eighty-seven, yes. Showing that the city offers above average park space. There's a comment in there.
What paragraph are you on, Stacy?
Um, I believe it's the it's the description of table nine point three. And uh the point being that we've always heard that the, there hasn't been enough funding for covering the number of parks that we have. So it's showing that the city offers above average space. Uh, just by adding then, but with below average funding. To balance it. Cause it implies that we can afford to have all these park spaces. But I know it's always a, a difficult situation for the uh parks to, you know, to get enough people to, to maintain all of them. So I was wondering if, oh, Matthew.
Yes, because we don't have specific data that the city actually has below average funding compared to other cities our size, can we use language that is less um sort of implying that we have data to, to say that statement?
Well, and I questioned the, the first statement that we have above average um, above average park space.
That comes directly from our Parks and Trails Master Plan, uh when, when that was completed. So that's from a plan that's now 10 years old and uh one of the goals is to update that plan or one of the uh strategies. Um, but from what the Parks and Trails Master Plan says, that is uh accurate. And I, I would believe it's accurate to this day as well. Not that we have up to date data on that.
Could you reference that 10-year-old uh Parks and Trails thing in this one? Uh, just to.
It is already referenced.
Yeah, it's up there.
It is up there.
Oh, okay.
I just wondered if, if there is a way um I'm just trying to think of a different way of saying it that's not that can be based on fact. I don't know, Matthew, do you have any ideas of how to, to say that differently? If not, we can just move on.
I might defer to Shannon here, but just something in the effect of uh, you know, the, the above average parks space can uh cause or create a strain on uh city resources in, in maintaining uh and funding parks, something like that.
Can cause a strain on funding of maintaining parks?
Funding or maintaining. And if Shannon has a, a suggestion, I'm certainly happy to defer to him.
Can I ask where this is coming from again?
Well, um, I think for me, it's like coming from um new developments coming in and say, oh, well, you know, we had this discussion earlier about uh payment and lieu, but we have, we have so many parks and we can't maintain them all. Um, and the spreading of just kind of not enough people to uh, you know, prioritize all the parks and how to keep them all mode and everything. So or maintained. So um it is just recognizing and trying to balance the, the idea that we don't need any more green space. And we've heard that, that we still want to have more green space as we do the infill, as we, as we grow in whatever way we do grow. So um it was merely a you know, a recognition of the facts, I guess. We don't have the surplus to handle all the maintenance of the parks.
Well, I'm wondering, I guess, I'm just curious like what the goal is of adding it. Like, is it tied to a strategy? Are you trying to increase the amount that we're funding parks? Are you trying to decrease the amount of park space we have? I'm confused like what the goal of the statement is really.
I'm trying to keep promoting parks. And to me, when it was just left out there, it was kind of like, well, then we don't need to have any more parks.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, no, it's helpful to, it's helpful to hear what you're thinking. Thank you, Stacy.
Yeah.
There was also a direct public comment. I think it's on page two of Sarah Stan's public comment that references that exact language.
Thank you. That's helpful.
So um I guess I, I'll, I'll make a motion so we can move on to add to the end of average park space and to add, this can cause a strain on maintenance of parks, of the parks.
Maintenance funds.
Maintenance funds of the.
Can I, can I ask another question though before?
Sure.
Is the amount of park space what causes the strain? Or is it the fact that we're not able to hire enough seasonal workers like we used to be able to that causes the strain?
We needed a second. Is that what you're gonna say, Matthew?
Yeah, before we have a discussion.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Matthew.
Thanks for putting your finger up. I was thinking that in my mind. Do we have a second on this one?
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask my question?
I think so, yes.
Well, I'm just curious because like since I've been a commissioner, just two and a half-ish years. The, the amount of employee, like just, just in the time that I've been a commissioner, which is not that long. The city is having a harder and harder time. It seems like every year filling vacancies because of housing. So is it the park space that's causing the problem? Or is it the fact that people can't find places to live and there's higher paying jobs? Just like the next town over. Like, I'm not sure it's I don't know. Like I'm, this is probably a question for Shannon. Um is it the park space is the problem? Or is it the fact that we're not able to retain employees a problem, the problem?
Well, I think both, both caused the issue. And I mean, I appreciate what Stacy's trying to get at and you know, I, maybe we should discuss a goal or objective or a strategy that maybe identifies that, but you know, um it's pretty obvious, our, you know, our Parks and Trails Master Plan is over 10 years old and it, it had well over $2 million worth of recommended improvements and in over 10 years, we've barely even um completed, you know, 10% of that. So you know, it's pretty obvious looking at our parks budget that it is, it is heavily weighted on operation and maintenance of our current facilities and there's not a lot of room for capital improvement. So um, you know, uh, maybe the bigger discussion that our group needs to have is, is, you know, should there be a strategy that uh looks at the creation of a parks maintenance district or something of that's um something of that nature, you know, to create a revenue stream and, and have a fund that not only allows us to maintain our current parks, but, but also allows for future, future park for future growth in our park areas or future development in our park areas.
So does a, one of these districts, does that go for paying for like the material goods of the park? Or does it go for like the material goods in a park and also like the salaries for the seasonal workers that are the ones caring for the parks? Like, is it both things? I know it starts to be complicated when you talk budget.
I, it should, it should be all inclusive. It should cover um wages, salary and uh equipment, operating, material costs um necessary to operate and manage and, and improve our parks and trail system.
I think we kind of already do. I mean, we don't talk about parks specifically, but in objective nine dot one dot four, we do talk about funding framework for ongoing infrastructure improvements. Now you can consider I would consider parks part of our infrastructure. And in there, we're talking about reviewing existing funding sources and tools to ensure availability for improvement. So we're talking about the capital improvement there. So I guess that's when I read that, that's how I was viewing it. Might be looked at differently, but.
Which strategy was that, Brian?
Uh, nine dot, I'm sorry, uh.
Nine, two, one, three.
Uh, where was it? I just lost myself here. Sorry. Uh, it was objective, objective nine dot one dot four. And then the strategies, actually, there's a typo there that needs fixed. It should be nine dot nine dot one dot one. No, um, no, that's not right.
Nine dot.
Nine dot one dot.
One dot.
Nine, nine dot one dot four dot one, sorry.
Oh, my gosh, nine dot.
Page ninety-two, yeah, page ninety-two.
Yeah, the top of ninety-two.
Yeah, objective nine dot one dot four, that. So if you look at that and you're talking about infrastructure in general, and again, I would consider kind of, because they talk about parks on the second strategy, I guess I just kind of mentally put all that together and said yeah, we need to look at our funding sources for all of our infrastructure, for capital improvements and things like that. So I, I think we're, I mean, I think we're covered.
Well, I, I think the one I just, this one just talks about federal funding and I believe what Shannon was, was referring to was more of an, another district like.
The second one does. The first strategy does not limit it to funding, uh, sorry, limited to federal.
Yeah, I noticed that.
It's more just generic.
And it, it wasn't directed to parks.
No, it's directed to infrastructure improvements. And whether you want to consider parks part of the infrastructure or not, I guess is up for interpretation. I would.
Yes.
Would, would everybody be agreeable of just removing the word federal from nine point one, point four, point two?
Yes, perfect. I second that motion.
You want to make a motion, Shannon?
I make a motion to remove the word federal from nine point one, point four, point two.
Nine point one, point four, point two.
This is Brian. I second it.
Okay, Shannon. Brian, remove federal. Anybody want to chat about that one?
I do, um.
Go ahead.
He, could we consider including Shannon's suggestion for um, for a district? Cause that, I think that's a, I think it's a really smart and very specific um suggestion for a future funding source. Um, and I would hate for that to be lost just in our discussion. I, um, I I think it could be included in this strategy, um, or alternatively, it could be its own strategy, but um, I like that idea from Shannon and I would like for that to be given here.
So we could say something like uh strategy nine point one point four point three would be explore creating a, whatever you called it, Shannon.
Parks maintenance.
District.
Yeah, so that could be the ne- the next strategy after this one, if we.
Sure, I mean, I think that, I think that calls it out even more. So um, I, I think that's probably my preferred um scenario. So I, I guess we could, we could just vote on.
Yeah, let's do it. Okay, is there any other discussion on this, on Shannon's motion of removing the word federal? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
For.
Tori?
For.
Stacy?
Or.
Taya?
Or.
Shannon?
Or.
Melissa?
Or.
And then I am also for. Okay, who wants to take that strategy on?
Shannon, did you, you referred to it as a, a Parks and Trails district?
Trails Maintenance District.
Parks and Trails Maintenance.
Was it parks or parks only or parks and trails?
The, we, we've been referring to Parks and Trails together and I think that that um it makes sense. Um could, could it be Parks and Trails Maintenance and Capital Improvement District? Um, is, you know, we're not, we don't want the, it to sound like it's just for for maintaining existing parks and trails? Or is that, is that how you were thinking about it, Shannon?
Uh, I my envision of a maintenance district would include, I mean, would include capital improvements.
Okay, okay. Um, I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and make that motion. Unless someone else wants to say something. Okay, so I make a motion for adding strategy nine point one, point four, point three, which would say consider the formation of a Parks and Trails Maintenance District for future funding for future funding or for future funding of Parks and Trails.
How about sustainable funding?
Great, love it.
Okay, let me read it back so we can get a second. Uh, consider the formation of a Parks and Trails Maintenance District for sustainable funding of Parks and Trails. Everybody got that one? Stacy? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
You can have it. Put Shannon seconded. Um, and any other discussion before we vote? Okay, Brian?
Against.
Whoa, he threw me. Tori? Stacy?
Or.
Taya?
Or.
Shannon?
Or.
Melissa?
Or.
And I am for. Okay, that motion passes. Tori, did you have anything else? Okay. Anybody else before I pop in? Taya, do you have one?
One thing, um, I'll walk, walk through my thinking here. Uh, page eighty uh six, the second paragraph, it's under the source water protection section. And the second paragraph, the last sentence, it says analyses and recommendations within, and it references two reports can be useful to planning for the growth of Livingston and will be considered in the recommendations for the growth policy. But then I didn't really see a strategy related. Um, there's ensuring water supply, but uh ensuring um quality, healthy drinking water. Um, so I was thinking about a strategy that's references those, the recommendations from those reports to ensure quality drinking water.
Okay, which are the two ones that you did see? Because you probably want to put this one near there, right?
Yes, uh, it would be under objective nine point one, point two. Probably after strategy nine point one, point two, point four.
Okay. And say what you wanted to, you want that strategy to be again? Sorry.
Um, uh, so uh u- utilize recommendations from the uh, those two, two reports. The uh they are the SWDAR and the WQIR. I can, I can say those acronyms, Source Water Delineation and Assessment Report and the Water Quality Integrated Report to ensure quality drinking water.
Quality and safe or quality, quality?
Safe drinking water.
Quality and safe drinking water. Okay, that would have been, so nine point one, point two, point five, and then you're bumping nine point one, point two, five, five to be nine point one, point two, four, six, potentially. Okay, anybody wanna, um, so that's not, you haven't really made a motion yet.
I'm motion to add the strategy. Sorry, what was it again?
It was no problem. It was um nine point one, point two, point five.
Uh, utilize recommendations from the SWDAR and WQIR to ensure quality and safe drinking water.
Okay, do you have a second? Okay, do you have a second? Anybody want to? Melissa? Perfect. Any, um, conversation around that?
Yeah, I just, just, I, I feel it's redundant. I mean, those are two documents that are required by Montana DEQ. And, you know, we have a city code section on our source water delineation, uh, and we are in the process of updating that two thousand and eleven, um, report. Unfortunately, COVID has affected that and, and prolonged, um, the completion of that. But, you know, it's, it's more or less stating the obvious in my opinion, but if the board feels it needs to be in as a strategy, um, so, you know, that's fine.
Shannon, do you?
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna say, is there a way, um, I'm just thinking about kind of going back to that, our, our vision for the city. Is there a strategy where you, or a different way you would word that, where you would though, call out, you know, for, related to the source water protection and healthy drinking water? Or do you feel like it's been captured in one of the other?
I guess, Taya, the, the thing is, I, um, I, it, it's a requirement that we follow those. So I, I mean, I, I feel like there's no options there. So the findings of those reports are what we do have to implement into our operations. Um, just again, it's, it's, it's required by DEQ. So we have, we have to, or mandated to follow those, um, the findings in those documents.
Yeah, this is my thing. I think that's great to know, Shannon. I wonder if we could just update the text in that paragraph that, um, Taya was referencing, because it does say that the analyses and recommendations can be useful to planning for the growth and will be considered in the recommendations. I wonder if we could just change that sentence to reflect that they're useful for planning the growth and they're required.
Yeah.
Um, they're required. You know, by the city for whatever, whatever, however, the language should be.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
How would, how would you phrase that then? Um, what if we? Anyway, if you have, we have a thing probably to vote on first, but I don't know.
I will retract, remove, retract my motion.
Withdraw.
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 Thank you. And I, and I appreciate Melissa that, that addition because it wa, it wasn't clear to me as the reader.
Me neither, thank you. So, but I'm wondering, Shannon, can you help? Yeah, does anybody have, sorry, Jesse? No, that's okay. It just sounds like we could just say analysis and recommendations within the acronyms are required and are useful to planning for growth. Can we just write are required? Does that make sense to you, Shannon?
It does. It does.
Okay. We need a motion for that one, Matthew?
Yeah, one thing. Um, can we say are required to be implemented? Um, just saying are required, it just sounds like the recommendations themselves are required. It doesn't sound like we actually have to do anything with them.
Are required and implemented.
To be implemented.
Are required to be.
Are required to be implemented and useful for planning.
To be implemented. Okay.
And useful.
I'm gonna make that motion while I'm sitting here fingering on the holes. Analysis, I make a motion to change the paragraph. Analysis and recommendations within the SWDAR and WQIR which are required to be implemented and are useful to planning for the growth of Livingston, et cetera.
I will second that.
Thank you, Taya. Any other discussion on that one?
Just for a quick reference, what page was that on?
Eighty-six.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. Okay, let's, um, let's vote. I don't remember who everybody is. Okay, Brian?
Or.
Ta, Tori?
Or.
Stacy?
Or.
Taya?
Or.
Shannon, Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
Or.
Jesse is for, okay. Anybody else? Taya, did you have anything else? Okay, you're good. Okay, I'm gonna go here really quickly and I'm gonna bring it up for discussion first, but the two things that I thought came up earlier and I thought we could maybe consider adding either into the language or as a strategy, but I kind of want the board's opinion on this. You know, um, there was some public comment and I cannot remember who, uh, in the written comment where uh, promoting water conservation strategies was requested or mentioned. And the other one was raising public awareness around the benefits of stormwater management. And earlier, so let's start with this stormwater management one. In this paragraph, we kind of discussed that and Melissa, you were asking, hey, Shannon, is this enough and how important it is to, um, for the community to understand, uh, stormwater management? Do you guys think that this should be a strategy that we raise public awareness about the benefits of stormwater management? Or is it something we want to state in the paragraph? Does anybody have any thoughts on that? And if you don't, oh.
So, what is your point, Jessica?
Well, it, so we had a discussion earlier about Melissa learning all about stormwater management and how important it was and that we are, you know, planning to save funds aside to deal with this. Do we think it's important to make it a strategy where we're raising public awareness about the benefit of stormwater management? Meaning, uh, is the city going to take some action to, you know, educate the public on stormwater management and why it's so important and why we're gonna charge you for it or add it to a line item on our property taxes? Or, or is it best suited as a strategy, I guess is my question, or should it be in the language of the section C? Yes, Brian.
This is Brian. I personally don't think it's necessary. I mean, Shannon already had, I saw a city commission meeting where you gave a pretty long presentation on it a few months ago. Um, I mean, we can educate the community on a lot of things and I'm not sure it's worth spelling this one out, so I, I don't think, my personal belief is I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts on that? Thank you, Brian.
So, this is Shannon, um. So, you know, this, the growth policy references a study. Um, that's a study that I had done, um, well, almost, well, three and a half years ago now. We have not, the city administration has not presented that study to the commission yet, so that's something that we need to, to get done. And then once the city commission accepts that study, we certainly can post that on our city website and we can put some educational, uh, material with that, um, on the new, the updated city website, so. Um, I know that the public doesn't, um, you know, if, if you, if the board feels like it's important to add something about the education component, but that, that's really just the policy and procedure that we typically have with, with, um, a utility like this, especially one that we're looking at creating for the first time in our community, so, uh, you know, I, I, I see this in my mind, but if, if the board feels like it needs to be actually stated, um, you know, I, I can understand that point as well.
So.
I guess it seems to me that, sorry, Jessica. It, if we already have in there, we're going to be educating people on that this, in this chapter on the different things, it would fall under that already without it needing to be a specific line item. Um, so I, I just wonder if it's necessary.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any comments on that? I don't feel that's strongly one way or the other. I just know we discussed it and there was a public comment. I, I will say that I do think it's super important to educate the public on stormwater. I mean, I think it's like the things that people care about in Livingston, like the river, for example, completely dependent on how Public Works does their job. And I know that Shannon has like at least once or twice a year doing heavy lifting to educate the community on this issue. So I don't know if it needs to be in here right now. Um, but I do think that it's like really important and I think, you know, I'm guessing that Shannon's gonna continue doing it as he, as these things unfold. Okay, so here's a thought. Section C, first sentence, stormwater runoff poses both flooding and pollution threats and and is a priority of the city to communicate that with the public? Something like that. Or, uh, the city makes, uh, efforts to communicate stormwater management to the public, the importance of stormwater management to the public. No thoughts? Okay, I'm gonna move on if you guys aren't feeling, if, if nobody's like loving this topic.
Oh, I love this topic. Don't get me started.
Okay, so I, I just like the idea of including it somewhere in here because of how important, I did not sit through the commission meeting last night, but I do understand how important stormwater runoff is for the environment. So I just would love to have it reflected in here somewhere. Can you say that sentence one more time? I was thinking about what you said. That's why I didn't. And I really like, botched it actually, but maybe I'll just say storm, so first sentence, section C, stormwater runoff poses both flooding and pollution threats. This, the city uh, prioritizes informing the community on the importance of storm water management. And I, I think the reason I was thinking, Jesse, is because I don't think it's just stormwater runoff. I think it's not managing stormwater poses it poses a lot more than flooding and pollution threats. It's a, there's a real economic threat to not managing stormwater, like this really expensive facility we have over by Bennett Street is gonna get wrecked if we don't, um, take care of our stormwater, because we're gonna be using it for things we don't need to use it for. So, um, so I think it's more than just stormwater runoff, it's just stormwater mismanagement poses flooding, pollution and economic threats. Mm-hmm. So what if we put something towards the end of that paragraph? It says, "The 2017 City of Livingston Storm Drainage Study assessed the existing drainage systems throughout the city for their capacity and problem areas and causes flooding. The city prioritizes educating the community on the importance of stormwater management." Is that a true statement and one that covers what I'm trying to get at? I think that's a true statement and it covers. Okay, I'm gonna make a.
Is it, is it, is it, is the city prioritizing it or is the city would like to prioritize it?
I think that both. Personally.
Or is?
I mean, isn't it our strategic plan? I'm trying to remember, but I'd be surprised if it wasn't.
The creation of a stormwater utility, looking at that as in the strategic plan and.
Which means we're prioritizing it.
I'm just jumping over backwards right now because, you know, I, I love the community or our discussion on stormwater and that it's a big topic in our community and that's great, but I, I really, I think for this, we're kind of getting into the weeds on, kind of nitpicking, um, uh, the education component. I, I, I yeah, I don't know if it's because there's a lack of trust between, but we don't do anything without, without having public discussions with the city commission on, um, you know, creating policies and I, I can assure everyone that with our commission now that, you know, we will do our best to educate everybody citywide as we move through the process.
Okay, so then it is, it is a true statement and it does give you some kudos, Shannon, that, just adding that sentence. So I'm gonna do it and we'll see if we get a second. I'm gonna make the motion that we add to paragraph one in section C, uh, at the last sentence. The city prioritizes educating the public on the importance of stormwater management. May I have a second?
I'll second.
I will second.
Oh, Taya and Melissa, yeah, all right. Okay, let's vote. Please, or, any more discussion on that one before we vote? Stacy, did you get my language?
And it causes a flooding and prioritizes educating the public on wastewater management.
Just period. And then the city prioritizes educating the public on the importance of stormwater management.
Stormwater, not wastewater.
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Okay, I made that motion and Taya seconded. Let's go ahead and go through the roll call here. Brian?
Against.
Tori?
Or.
Stacy?
Against.
Taya?
Or.
Shannon?
Or.
Melissa?
Or.
And I am for. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you for entertaining that one. Um, okay, let me just pull my other one out. The other, I'm gonna just go for this one because I'm going to. Um, so I wanna, I wanna create a strategy that says promote water conservation strategies. And I think it should go. Where do I think it should go? Um, um, I think I make the motion that we create a strategy. Oh, gosh, I guess it's nine point, one point, two point, seven. Nine point, one point, two point, seven, that says promote water conservation strategies.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Did you get it, Stacy?
Promote water conservation strategies.
Correct. Strategy nine point, one point, two point, seven on page ninety-one. Okay. We'll go ahead and vote. Brian?
For.
Tori?
Or.
Stacy?
Or.
Taya?
Or.
Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa?
Or.
And I'm gonna vote for. Okay, thank you. The other, um, thing I had on my list was, uh, looking at a goal nine point, two. And I, we may have sort of touched on this, so again, I'm gonna kind of ask you guys to bear with me here. My, what I'd like to do with objective nine point, two point, one is to do something like actively promote and develop as well as maintain current parks, trails and outdoor recreational areas that promote Livingston. So basically, I want to add as well as maintain current to that nine point, two point, one.
And where did you want to put maintain in what?
So it would read actively promote and develop as well as maintain current parks, trails and outdoor recreational areas that promote Livingston's historic, natural and cultural attributes, et cetera. Any discussion on that? Any thoughts on that, that, before I make that motion? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, change objective nine point, two point, one to read actively promote and develop as well as maintain current parks, trails and outdoor recreational, et cetera. Do I need to read the whole thing? Okay, um, can I, is there any second?
I'll second.
Uh, okay, that was Tori. Um, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
Or.
Uh, Tori?
Or.
Stacy?
Or.
Taya?
Or.
Shannon?
Or.
Melissa? Okay, and I'm also for. And I think, let me just, the, the second one was strategy nine point, two point, one point, one. Identify, monitor and protect public access to public lands and partner with others to help ensure public right of ways are maintained and open, mean, are maintained and open and accessible by the public. So I wanted maintain in that one, too.
Tell me the number again.
Nine point, two point. Nine point two point one point one. So to ensure public right of ways are maintained, open, and accessible by the public.
Okay, and, and you wanted to put maintain where? After public?
Between are and open. Are maintained, comma, open, and accessible by the public.
Okay.
Does anybody, I made that motion.
Are you trying to get, are you trying to get snow plowing to trailheads for skiing in the winter? Is that, is that what I'm hearing here?
If that's what it takes. Depending on the trail, actually. We don't want everybody up there, right? All right. Does anybody wanna second that one?
I'll second.
Thank you. So Melissa seconded. Does anybody wanna discuss that one?
Yeah, I just would say I think that's a good idea, Jesse, so we don't, um, it's important that people know what trails are public and that we maintain that communication so we don't lose access to things that we didn't realize were public.
Yeah. Thanks, Melissa. Okay, I made that motion and Melissa, you seconded. I think, so, uh, let's go ahead and vote. Uh, Brian?
For.
Tori? Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon? Yeah? Oh, okay. Melissa?
For.
Okay, and I am for. Okay, that motion passes. And that was everything that I had as well for chapter nine. Anybody else have?
I have one other.
Oh, go ahead.
I do, I have, I wanted to, um, ask people about the public comment we received on reconciling the differences of the percentages of the growth rate.
Thank you, Stacy.
So I wanted to to know what we should do with this. And I guess I needed a little bit more background from Matthew perhaps. Um, there's some deals on one, one percent to two percent was used in chapter two, but then they used two point six later on. So I just needed some, some clarity on that.
The growth policy is not using two point six as a growth rate. That is directly referencing that preliminary engineering report that is mentioned before that in the, basically in that paragraph. So that's where that number comes from. It's a, it's from an engineering report. So it's not for, for the growth policy to use. It's basically what's cited. Um, we will probably go back after the growth policy is adopted and look at those numbers again, just to make sure that everything is consistent. Um, but that's what's currently adopted in some of our documentation.
So does that mean that we don't need to do anything because you will automatically go back and check on it? Or do we need to make a motion to say to go back and look at it because we already have mixed numbers?
It's up to you, but you don't really need to, to update it because the growth policy has one number. That two point six number isn't going to affect the growth policy. It's just what's in a different document. Um, so you can go back. Go ahead.
I was just wondering which one is, is the way I interpreted it to mean the one, the one percent to two percent is kinda like the, the low end of the estimation. The two point six percent is the upper end of the estimation, but nobody knows.
Can I, can I try on this one? Can I try on this one? It's really context. So the growth policy, we're saying one to two percent. This study, which was done years ago to develop the sewer plant was based on a different number. It's just, that's the number they used back then. It doesn't mean that's the standard number we're using going forward for the growth policy. So there's just a, it, it, it was a snapshot in time that they used. So I don't look at it as being a conflict. It's just citing a data point that was used in the initial engineering study. So I would recommend we do not change anything.
If I might add, I don't think the growth policy reads as a whole like a document that expects little growth in Livingston. It, it, I think it reads like, as a document, as a, uh, as something that expects a fair amount of growth in Livingston. And, uh, the upper limit of that estimate based, and we talked about this before, based on basically just the best data that is currently available is two percent. And if we, if we changed it to three percent, I don't think that would require us to go back and add a bunch of new strategies to the growth policy. Um, I get the point that the, the public comment was making is that, you know, there were, there are these different numbers and that, that brings up different scenarios and that's confusing to the reader. I don't think that's an invalid point, but I, I don't necessarily think that addressing it is going to make substantive changes to the growth policy.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up and have that clarification made as to how it impacts everything. So that's fine.
I appreciate that, Stacy, because I actually had that kinda written down to get some clarification too. Okay, does anybody else wanna talk about chapter nine?
Oh, just, just one last thing. I, I can assure everybody that, that the recommendations are not solely based on that for improvements are not solely based on that two point six percent growth rate. That growth rate is not driving those capital projects. And we have our, we have our sewer collection system modeled, so, you know, we, we know where we have capacity issues. Just based on, uh, development. But as Matthew and I have discussed actually earlier this week, is now that we do have, once the commission accepts this growth policy, we can go back to some of these engineering studies and, and plans and actually modify them to be representative of the growth policy. Um, growth projections.
I'm gonna come off mute for that.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. At least we understand better, better.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, yeah.
Sorry. I just wanna say that was a great question and I, can you hear me still? Okay, that was a great question and I appreciate what Shannon just said, because that's like a really important part is that we go back and make sure all these, this library of documents match. So thank you, Shannon, and the nodding from Matthew.
We love our city staff.
Matthew.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on chapter nine before we take a five minute break? Okay, it is seven.
I just, I just don't wanna forget, some of the numbering was off under, on the strategies and I don't.
You got that one, right? It was on page ninety-two and then there's bumping it down. Okay. Okay, anything else on chapter nine?
Before we quickly take a break, uh, one of you is intermittently sending electronic feedback through the system and it's like coming out as a very high pitched noise. If you have like anything generating electric currents around your computer, can you just sort of like push them away? Thanks.
Is that like a cell phone?
No, it's probably like a cable with a unplugged end or something like that. That's, that's plugged in somewhere. I'm not really sure.
It might be me, the, the washing machine's going blowing, but there's not a lot I can do about that, unfortunately.
I didn't wanna call you out, but I think it is you, so if you can't do anything about it, don't worry about it.
I guess I'll, I'll move. I'll go to a different room.
Get out of the laundry room. Okay, let's take, it is, um, seven thirty-one. We'll see you all back here at seven thirty-six. I've got seven thirty-six. Almost enough time to make hot water for tea lukewarm. There we go. Okay, we're just waiting on Tori and Taya. I see Melissa, Stacy, Shannon, Brian, Matthew. There's Taya. Melissa and Tori, are you guys, um, there and ready? Okay. Awesome, sorry. Yeah, I know you're eating, yes, you can totally turn your thing off.
How was my sound?
I don't hear a squeak.
Okay.
All right, everybody, uh, we're gonna move on to chapter ten. Quite possibly the shortest chapter in the growth policy potentially. Um, before we get started, Matthew, is there anything you wanna address about chapter ten from the memo or? At all? No?
Definitely the shortest chapter. I've got nothing for you, so, uh, I'm happy to move it to public comment.
Okay. Then we are gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment on chapter ten only, please. Uh, you'll have three minutes to give your comment. I'll hold the phone up when we're, you're about thirty minutes, thirty seconds from the end. Um, if you have a comment, please raise your hand and please don't forget to state your name and address for our meeting minutes. Okay, I see Ms. Jean Kefler, you have your hand up. Go ahead with your public comment. And you're on mute, Jean. Oh, you're still on there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Um, I, my name is Jean Kefler. I live at ten ten Swingley Road, Livingston, Montana. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of Friends of Park County and myself. Um, regarding chapter ten, I'm gonna kinda segue between ten and twelve. What Friends of Park County would like to do is tighten the link between coordination and implementation. We have suggested some language in our written testimony and I think it will suffice if you go over that, like, over that language. I don't think I need to dwell on it. I do wanna speak from the heart though and say that this is the first chapter where the importance of city-county cooperation and coordination is introduced. And, um, without tight cooperation and coordination, all of our dreams for the ETG, ETJ will come to naught. So whatever you can do to ensure that in fact, there is an effective mechanism set up that will be right relentlessly pursued to ensure achievement of the mutual objectives will be very important. I noticed PCEC, when I scanned their comments earlier tonight, is, um, also directly mentioning the importance of a city-county committee. I'm sure you'll be hearing from them on that. So finally, thank you for your many months of intense work and the many improvements you've made to the policy.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Michelle Ubaraga, I see your hand up as well. Go for it.
Hi, Jesse, thank you. Michelle Ubaraga, I live at seven eleven Lock Haven Drive here in Livingston. And I also represent the Park County Environmental Council. Um, yeah, we, we submitted written comments and I'm not gonna repeat them, but I, I, I thought this was a really noteworthy and important place to just make some verbal comments to really, I, I've been, um, just echo a lot of what Jean said, that, that, um, what happens in the city impacts what happens in the county and vice versa. We've heard really loud and clear from the community that we wanna see infill development. Uh, we wanna avoid rural sprawl and a strategy like that only works if the city is, uh, working hand in hand with the county. Um, otherwise, you know, we can, um, overplan in the city and underplan in the county, um, and, uh, end up kind of creating a problem that we're, we're trying to solve. So I, I, I think that the importance of intergovernmental coordination is incredibly high and I think that it ties really well into, um, chapter twelve implementation. I think that this is something that, that, that you all could get up off the ground, um, right away, you know, that, that, there, it wasn't that long ago. And, and Shannon, you may recall, uh, that we had a, a functioning city-county board. Um, and so I think that it wouldn't take a whole lot of effort. I think that, that you'll probably find folks willing, um, at the county and, uh, it'd be a really good first win um, in implementation to get, uh, a, a city-county board up and running. So, uh, thank you so much and, um, thank you for all your hard work. And yeah, here we are at the thank you so much, and thank you for all your hard work. And yeah, here we are, here you are, at the finish line, almost.
Great. Thank you very much. I think here we are. We, you, thanks for all of you for sticking with us throughout this entire journey. Okay, I am gonna go ahead and say second call for comment on chapter 10. I don't see any hands raised. Matthew, do you see anybody? If you don't know how to raise your hand, you can just unmute yourself. Second, third call for public comment on chapter 10, intergovernmental coordination. Okay, we're gonna close public comment. Thank you all for both written and verbal comments tonight. We really appreciate it. Okay. Planning Board, who wants to start with chapter 10?
Well, I just, I just have one. Oh, Brian, you can go.
Go ahead, Stacy. You went ahead and start. That's fine.
Mine was just on strategy on the second page, 10211. I just had a question on the word gauge. Interest from Park County, cuz it didn't seem to me like that was the right word to use. I mean, that's kind of like, well, maybe you wanna, we wanna do something with them, then maybe we don't wanna do something with them, is the word gauge. That's what kind of comes to my mind, and it seemed like it it should be more like explore creating a city-county planning board. So that's what I would, would suggest.
Stacy.
And I think, and the other thing is, I just didn't know whether we, are we being redundant? Because I thought earlier on in this process, there was discussion of the creating, the creation of a city-county board. So Matthew, can you clarify that?
Yeah, so this strategy is not referring to a city-county planning board. It's basically referring to potentially a more informal body that would meet every once in a while to discuss planning issues in the region, something like the Transportation Coordination Committee, where the city, the county, and MBT get together and, and sort of just tell each other what, what they're working on. The city-county planning board is discussed in the ETJ section and is also required under state law if you were gonna zone that area. So that has been covered. This is a bit of a different thing. When they say gauge interest from Park County, I think the intent was just to say, we can't force Park County to, to wanna do this. But I'm totally fine with any linguistic changes you all wanna make to that.
Stacy, do you mind if I tell you what I wrote down for that particular one?
No, go ahead. That's why I said, let's just do a little discussion first.
Great. I wrote engage with Park County and other local jurisdictions in developing and participating in a regional planning committee to regularly, regularly coordinate and collaborate on regional opportunities. That was what my hope was in changing the language of that particular strategy.
Can you say that all again of what you, what you thought?
Could I?
The main difference was, what you were thinking of adding?
Yep, I would like to replace, but this is how I would like it to read. If I was to make a motion, I would say engage with Park County and other local jurisdictions in developing and participating in a regional planning committee to regularly coordinate and collaborate on regional opportunities.
So you're just basically adding the word collaborate and engage instead of gauge?
Engage with Park County. I'm removing engage interest from and adding the word collaborate.
Right. Right.
And I know you have, I'm happy to make that motion.
That's fine. You can make the motion.
Perfect. I make a motion that we change strategy to 10.2.1.1 to engage with Park County and other local jurisdictions in developing and participating in a regional planning committee to regularly coordinate and collaborate on regional opportunities. Is there a second?
Second for Brian.
Take it, Brian.
Second.
Brian's got it. Any conversation you guys wanna have around that one? Before we vote? Okay, let's go for it. Brian?
For.
Tori?
For.
Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
And I am also for. Okay, motion passes. And Stacy, I don't wanna, I have a whole bunch for this section, but I don't wanna, I want you to keep going.
That was the only thing I had, so you can, that's the only thing I had at the moment, so you can go ahead.
Okay, do you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with my role here since I made a motion. So here it goes. Here's my, I'm, here's my premise to why I'm gonna make all these motions. I, in, in addition to the word coordination, I feel very strongly that we should also be adding the word collaboration. Coordination means getting together to do something. Collaboration means working together. And I think that's really an important distinction, and I think I would like to see the word collaboration in here pretty much everywhere that the word coordination is in here. So I have a couple language motions I'm going to make. But, but the rationale behind that is my entire world is collaboration, and I feel as though I've worked in this community for 15 years, and collaboration was a very difficult thing to cultivate. However, now, I feel like the groups that I work with, which includes the city and the county and many nonprofit organizations and for-profit organizations, the collaboration has come a very long way in Livingston and Park County, and so I really would like to see that reflected in this section. And so here goes my suggestions on how I would like to have that reflected in this section. Ready? Okay. So in the introduction, the very last sentence, there are already many examples of coordination. I would like to say of coordination and coordination, comma, collaboration and cooperation between agencies. That is my motion. Would anybody like to second that motion?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I, I'm, I'm a little bit behind. You said the second paragraph of the introduction or the second, the first paragraph?
Nope, the first paragraph, the very last sentence. It begins, there are already many examples. See where I am, Stace, 90, page 94?
No.
Under the introduction section, the very first paragraph.
There's no single government agency, right?
The last sentence of that paragraph.
Oh, there are already many examples. Okay, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
I got it.
So comma coordination, coordination, comma collaboration and cooperation. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Um, I made that motion. I believe Brian seconded that one.
Correct.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion on that, you guys? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Brian?
For.
Tori?
For.
Stacy?
For.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
And me is for. Okay, here's my second change. And I have the absolute worst handwriting, and I can't even read my own handwriting, but I'm gonna give this one a good go. Okay, so the second paragraph Stacy in the introduction. The following profile provides an overview of the history of intergovernmental coordination efforts in which the city has been involved, as well as assumptions about future involvement in similar efforts, and the importance of reciprocity, reciprocity between inter-agent, inter-government agencies. Okay, I'm gonna read that again, cuz that's wonky. The following profile provides an overview of the history of intergovernmental coordination efforts in which the city has been involved, as well as assumptions about the future involvement of similar efforts, and the importance of reciprocity. Thank you, between inter-government agencies. It's like Scrabble. Words. I think that word reciprocity is also an important word to include in this chapter. That's my motion. Would anybody like to make a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, anybody have any discussion on that?
To me, the term reciprocity kind of elicits a feeling of political deal-making.
It's like an, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I guess I personally have kind of a to me, there's a, there's somewhat of a negative connotation of reciprocity. It, it makes me think of quid pro quo, things of that nature.
I was thinking of it more so, and I even wrote down the definition on here, that I like this exchange with others for mutual benefit, like, so making sure that we are working and exchanging with county and other agencies for mutual benefit, for the mutual benefit of both parties.
About synergy.
I like synergy. The importance of synergy.
Instead of reciprocity, synergy?
It's kind of a different, sorry, it's kind of a different thing. I, I agree with Tori. I'm not a big fan of the reciprocity term. It definitely sounds I mean, not everybody's gonna be a winner, and we're implying everybody's gonna be a winner. Sometimes there's gonna be a little bit of give and take, and it does have kind of a graft type of term tied to it, but it's not really the same thing as synergy, though, either. I, I'm just happy with saying collab, I, I think you should just stay on the theme of collaboration. I think that's the important thing. Not really relying on one or the other to give or provide something, but just continuing to work with each other to meet common goals.
Can you just change the word from reciprocity to collaboration? And the importance of collaboration between intergovernmental agencies?
I suppose we could. We have a second on the table. I'm not quite sure I wanna change it. I'm, I'm not.
Who was the second?
Mine, Taya, right? Or no, am I on the right one? Yeah, okay. But I'm still open to, does anybody else wanna chime in on the word reciprocity or, or synergy? I'm feeling like I like.
I don't like the word synergy.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Back. I think of it as, as this effort for a mutually beneficial exchange or engagement. So that, that is why I seconded.
And I think we're talking about like, I'm, I mean, I'm imagining what we're talking about is the importance of like maintaining these like relationships with other agencies, even when we're not like just tied to one specific project, that like, it's the relationship between agencies that needs to be maintained so that we can like, that's part of collaboration, right? It's like not being in an extractive relationship, but being in a relationship that's like what's the word I'm looking for? Like, just like this, just building like strong alliances, really. So I don't know how to say that.
How about mutually beneficial?
Isn't that the definition of reciprocity?
Kind of depends.
And I guess I, and remember, I wrote in here, and the importance of, so it's, it's saying that it's saying that the coordination efforts in which the city has been involved, as well as assumptions about future involvement of similar efforts, and the importance of reciprocity between those government agencies, I guess, is, I, I'm hoping we, I'm, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Good, good, could you simplify it down to just give and take? For reciprocity?
No, I think what we wanna try, I think what we wanna try to get is win, you know, win-win. Everybody, you know, everybody wins through, again, I, I use the term mutually beneficial relationship. I don't know, I, I I think I agree with Tori. There's just some, reciprocity seems like a loaded term to me. It seems like, it's almost like you are owing somebody for some action versus, you know, working together to get to, to some ends.
Okay, so let's do this, and not to, if somebody had a definite word, wordsmithing, that they wanted to amend the motion, cuz we have one on the table, and we have a second, we could vote, or somebody could amend that motion.
So make an amendment to change reciprocity to mutually beneficial. If that works, I can't allow the whole gist of the sentence, if that's proper structure, but add a pronoun if required.
So it would be, and the importance of a mutually beneficial
Collaboration.
Between mutually beneficial collaboration between intergovernmental agencies.
Perfect.
Okay, who wants to second Brian's?
I will second it.
Okay, let's vote on Brian's amendment. Any discussion on that one?
I'm, I'm just not sure about the mutual. I, I did get it, but I, I just feel like mutually beneficial, to me, strikes me just as bad as reciprocity. I think you're just as well off by just saying collaboration between inter-governmental agencies.
I think that's a different word.
I understand what you're trying to say, Jessie.
Yeah. Okay. We're gonna vote on Brian's amendment unless anybody wants to comment. Okay. We're voting on Brian's amendment to change the language to mutually beneficial collaboration. Brian?
For.
Tori?
I'm perfectly ambivalent on both of these, and so I'm going to, I'm going to abstain, cuz I, I can't make up my mind.
Okay, Stacy?
No.
Taya?
For.
Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
Okay, and I'll be for too. That's fine. I'll go with mutually beneficial collaboration. Thank you. Okay, great. Oh, do we still have to vote on mine? Can I, can I withdraw mine since I voted yes for his? Or should we just?
Or mandating your.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Sorry, thank you, Roberts. Rules. Okay, now we're gonna vote on mine. Brian?
Against.
Okay, Tori?
Staying.
Okay. Stacy?
No.
Taya?
Against.
Shannon?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
I know, I kinda wanna say yes to, but I'll say yes, but it won't matter, cuz it doesn't pass anyway. Okay, good, thank you.
I used myself if I said yes to both.
Thank you. I was confused anyway, but thank you. Good conversation. I appreciate that.
So to be clear, nothing that, nothing that we just said will be included now. No changes are made.
No, yes, there are, because Brian's amendment was.
Brian's amendment passed, but then yours failed, so that means no changes happened.
Shoot, so now we're not changing it? Well, I voted yes. It didn't matter.
I'll, I'll make a motion to just, I'll, I'll make a motion to just, in, instead of reciprocity, put collaboration.
I second.
We have a lot more clarity on what that motion is, please.
Yeah.
The motion would read, and the importance of collaboration between intergovernmental agencies.
You wanna ditch mutually beneficial collaboration?
I don't want mutually beneficial. I just said collaboration.
Okay.
All right, well, second.
Okay, Brian seconded. You guys know what we're voting on. Does anybody have any other discussion? Okay. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And I am also four. Okay, great. We're going to really love the word collaboration, I think, hopefully at the end of this, maybe. Okay, here's my next one. Under profile, the first paragraph, I want to add a sentence at the very end, and I would like it to say, there are many examples of collective impact groups incorporating city and county representatives that are beneficial to our community. Hold on. There are many.
Read that again?
Yep, sure thing. There are many examples of collective impact groups incorporating city and.
There are many examples of, what, what impact groups?
Collective. Impact.
Okay.
Groups incorporating city and county representation. These collaborations are beneficial to our community. And I want to emphasize, and the reason behind that is I am emphasizing how many city and county representatives are working together on different groups and working well to the benefit of our community, and that's why I wanted to include that statement.
Did you want to give an example of one or two?
Sure, Live Well 49 is one. Park County Environmental, or Early Childhood Coalition is another. What else, what other examples can I give of collective impact groups? The Crisis Response Coalition is another. This is what I do for a living, is coordinate all these groups. And they all have city and county representatives working together with other nonprofits, for-profit healthcare agencies, and so I, I just want that represented in this profile.
I second it. I'm assuming you made a motion.
I did. Uh, okay. Does anybody have any discussion that they want to have on that one?
Yeah, it is Brian. I, I guess it's, it, maybe I'm missing something, but it seems like it's repeating the sentence, the last sentence in the profile. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's adding anything to that. I mean, it's already talking about the coordination efforts that go beyond just the city and county, and they offer additional benefits, so I'm, it seems like we're saying the same thing twice unless I'm missing something.
I guess I just wanted to make sure that we are understanding that these collective impact groups work incorporating both city-county representation. It, I guess I just wanted to emphasize that there are many existing collective impact groups incorporating both government agencies that are benefiting the community, so this just says additional coordination will benefit the city, the county, and the residents. Similarly, coordinating efforts that extend beyond the relationship. I don't know. I, I see where you're coming from, Brian. I guess I just was emphasizing these particular collective, you know, in my mind, and I guess this is because this is what I do. That collective impact piece, again, that's the word, it's the language of collective impact that I liked. These collective impact groups.
Okay.
You're basically just.
Sorry, go ahead, Stacy.
No, you go ahead.
I'm just not familiar with that term, so if that's a specific term, I'm, I'm fine with that, then I, if it's, if it's a unique term that's standalone from the previous sentence, I'll trust you on that. I'm okay with that. I just, I'm just not familiar, familiar with that term, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Yeah, there's like books and books and books on collective impact work in communities. Well, I don't know if there's books and books and books, but there's a few. Any other conversation on that before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead then. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And I am also four. Okay, and the last thing I, I want to say, but I know I'm going to have to make a motion on every single one of these, probably Matthew, but what I would like to do, and I think we've done this in similar areas in the growth policy, is throughout each of these strategies, 10.2, 1.2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and I'm happy to make a motion on every one of them if needed. I would like them to re-communicate and collaborate with the National Park Service as needed. Communicate and collaborate with the Montana Department of Transportation as needed, et cetera, et cetera, down the line. I just really want, I know, yeah, one motion at a time.
One motion is fine on that. One motion is totally.
Oh, good. I make a motion that we add to the strategies 10.2, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, 1.5, 1.6, and 1.7 that we add communicate and collaborate in each sentence.
I second.
Tori?
Okay. All right, any discussion on that one? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Thank you. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And I am also four. And I'm done. I yield. Thank you for entertaining all of my motion. Who else has got stuff for 10? Yeah, Brian.
Jesse, just, just a quick comment. I said I had something, but we covered it with Stacy's conversation, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on chapter 10? Taya?
I just had one minor for strategy 10.2, 1.2. I'd like to make a motion to add Fish Wildlife and Parks and Forest Service.
Okay.
Is that a new one? A new strategy?
No, just adding to national.
Taya, is that what you mean?
No, same, existing strategy. 10.2, 1.2. It says communicate with the National Park Service as needed, and I'd like to make a motion to add National Park Service, comma, Fish Wildlife and Parks, comma, Forest Service.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a second on that one?
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, any conversation? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And I am also four. Okay. Taya, did you have another one?
Just asking, Matthew, for clarification, you mentioned the form, forming of a city-county planning board exists in the ETJ chapter.
And doesn't.
I believe so. I'd have to look at it, but the implication of exploring zoning requires that creation anyway, so it's definitely covered, but I'm pretty sure there's a specific goal.
Got it. Thank you, Matthew.
Yeah. Perfect.
Do we need something in this one to reference to the ETJ? If it's in the ETJ, but if you don't read the ETJ, do we need something in the growth policy to, to direct ourselves to the ETJ? Or the creation of a city-county?
Yeah, I guess my, so it's, it's mandated, but only if this, the city starts zoning in the ETJ. So if the city does not decide to zone in the ETJ, then there is no create, then there is no need to create that city-county planning board. Is that correct? Matthew? So, you know, Stacy, good point. There's been some public comment tonight and in written comment in the past about creating one perhaps regardless of whether we decide to zone, the city decides to zone in the ETJ.
Can we get clarification on that? I don't think we can zone there unless we have the joint planning board. The planning board has to come first. The joint planning board has to come before we can zone anything there.
So do we have anything in here that says to explore the formation of a joint planning board as in, in this section? I mean, I feel like we put it somewhere, but I don't remember where.
There is not one in this section, nor is there a direct reference in the ETJ section. I just went through it, so that is something you may want to cover.
So we probably would want to put something like that in. All right, I'll make a motion to explore the formation of a city-county planning board. Do I need to be more specific than that, or can it just be that general?
Okay. Is it a strategy or an objective strategy?
I'm not sure where county would, it'd be better as a goal or a strategy.
Maybe under 10 points, Stacy?
Yeah, my suggestion would be strategy 10.1, 1.3 is probably the best place to put it.
10.1, 1.3.
Three, okay. Okay. So was there a second to that one?
I've got, I've got you on a second.
Tori, got it. Okay, any discussion before we vote? Okay.
Stacy, thanks for checking, Matthew.
Yep. Nice work. Okay, let's vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And I am also four. Okay, good job. Motion passes. Anybody else want to do anything to section 10, chapter 10? Melissa?
I really liked Jean's word relentless, and I'm trying to figure out a way to get relentlessly collaborating in here. But I don't think I can. But I think we could do the same thing. What's that? What'd you say?
It was Jean.
Just obeying the ground rules. I said I could.
Oh. Okay, um, I was thinking for the, where, you know how you, Jesse said communicate and collaborate? I was just noticing under the objectives, both of them start with coordinate. I think we could also do the same thing and say coordinate and collaborate. Just because coordinating is like, okay, I'm going to go first and then you go second, and collaborates like, we're going to do this together, like it's a different connotation, so can I just make one motion? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion for objective 10.1.1 and 10.2.1. We amend the statement to say coordinate and collaborate.
Okay, for 10.1.1 and 10.2.1?
Yes, the objective.
Okay, got it. Add collaborate. Any second on that one?
It was Brian. I'll second.
Awesome, Brian. Okay, any discussion before we vote? Okay, let's do it. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
And Melissa?
Four.
Okay, and I'm four. Okay, great. Motion passes. You have anything else, Melissa?
Yeah, in the spirit, in the spirit of collaboration, I would change the whole title of the section to say intergovernmental coordination and collaboration.
Great idea. I second.
Hang on a second. Sorry, Melissa, could you repeat that?
Of course. So the section, this whole chapter?
Yep.
Stacy? Make a motion that we just write, add in collaboration.
Oh.
To the end.
Mm-hmm. Any discussion on that, you guys? All right. Let's vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And Jesse is four. Okay, great. Motion passes. What else on chapter 10?
My parting thought, I just want to say my parting thought on chapter 10 is that we are relentlessly collaborating on this growth policy together planning board. Thank you.
Yes, relentlessly.
A lot of good reciprocity going on here.
Hey, wait a second. That didn't, that word didn't make it.
Okay.
I'm going to go back and read my Roberts Rules of rule.
Oh, that's all right. We, we gave it the Golden College try. Okay. Anything else on chapter 10, you guys?
Oh. I just had one other question.
Yeah.
Um, the Friends of Park County brought up the point of implementation wasn't in any of our objectives. Is, is that a common thing to, to put in implementation? You know, like implement the recommendations included in the extraterritorial jurisdiction plan. Wait a minute, am I in the right place?
Yeah, that's in there. 10.1, 1.2.
It is.
Actually, that was their comment, wasn't it? Something about Appendix A.
I can't remember. They were saying coordination and communication is not the same as implementation. But.
Stacy, can I comment on that?
Sure.
I mean, our next, our next whole chapter is implementation.
Is on implementation.
Yeah, so I don't know.
It could be redundant. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'm good.
Anybody else in chapter 10? Oh my gosh, we did that in less than an hour. Sweet. Yes. All right, we're closing chapter 10 because I'm not hearing any other discussion from the board. Sweet. What a great chapter. Might be my favorite. All right. It is 8:20. We took a break at 7:36. Are we good to keep going, you guys? Does anybody need a break? Yes? Thumbs up? No, we're good? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move into chapter 12, implementation. Matthew, do you have anything you want to talk about before we open it up to public comment?
Yes, very quickly. There were a couple of public comments about implementation and sort of how things get implemented. I just want to make it clear to everyone. Basically, once the growth policy is adopted, the impetus or the, basically, the ball is going to be in the court of the, the city commission in that the way that we implement things in the city is that the city commission puts them in the strategic plan. So I just want to make that clear that once this gets adopted, it, it has to get translated into the strategic plan through the, through the city commission, and that's all I've got, and I'm happy to hand it over to you all and the board.
I have a follow-up question for Matthew on that. So what I heard you say is that folks that are interested should come to the strategic plan meetings. Where can people reach out to find out when those are scheduled? Where would you suggest people go?
Generally, the best place for information on city commission meetings would be either the city manager or or, or Faith, who is basically the city manager's administrative assistant. The city website, which is probably getting updated soon, so it'll change a little bit, also has that kind of information. The city calendar will contain agendas for upcoming meetings, and the city commission specific webpage on our website will also include agendas. Otherwise, generally, city staff can help you out, but it's usually either the website or contact the city manager's office.
And the Livingston paper has usually talks about the upcoming agendas.
Thanks. I just want to make sure people know to go if they only have your email address, Matthew, they can always ask you to, it sounds like, so. Awesome, thank you.
Sorry. I have this, I have this pug that makes really weird noises, so I muted so you wouldn't all have to experience that. Anyway, anybody have any questions for Matthew before we open it up to public comment? Yep, go ahead, Taya.
Um, Matthew, I was wondering if you could just clarify the, the timeframes? So that just for when, when implementation would begin? Not, not completion, correct?
Question. Let me read the introduction. I think it probably tries to cover both. Just looking at these, some of them, as you can see, have really long timeframes, which generally indicate that they either go on forever or something like ensuring access to public lands. But you can generally consider the, the beginning date as sort of the earliest timeframe for beginning that process, when things end are sort of more open-ended. But I think they are trying to sort of set a timeframe for when that will be occurring. Consider any implementation table as very loose and very, very subject to change as conditions change.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that question? Matthew, can you tell us how these times were determined, these timeframes and like the priorities?
Yeah, basically, just looking at what we thought was achievable in, in timeframes and what the community has put emphasis on. So items like updating regulations are often less expensive and potentially time-consuming for staff, but can be started immediately. There are certain things that are either very expensive or require studies prior to, that will take a little longer to implement. And there's also items that aren't potentially as high of a priority for the community that are included in the growth policies, so those can be pushed off a little bit. But we're basically estimating based on existing staff capacity, budgeting, and how long things take.
And just to be clear, when you say we, at this point, you mean like department heads and other city staff? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have any other, excuse me, questions for Matthew before we open it up to public comment?
Is it, is it, Matthew, important then to nitpick, say, something that's in the one to three category, years to the three to five years? Because did I hear you say that it could be? Something could change and you would just change it? I mean, make the importance more like less or put it off if it, if it got bumped further? So how important is it for us to have a feel for getting every single one correctly identified? I guess is what I'm after.
Sure. Obviously, the table guides the city commission on how to prioritize things. That's, that's the reason for the table. But I wouldn't say it's set in stone. So if something, you know, says three to five years and all of a sudden it becomes an emergency or something really drastic comes up or some, you know, large funding source comes up, it's not like we're set to that. We can't, we can't change that priority. If we get, you know, $10 million to build something and it says, oh, it's three to five years in the growth policy, we're not going to turn that $10 million down because it's, should be further down the priority list, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have another question for Matthew or clarifying? Comment, question? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Okay, we are going to take public comment on chapter 12 specifically, implementation. You will have three minutes to make your comment. Please do not forget to state your name and address for our minutes. And, okay, let's go ahead. Jean Kefler, would you like to make your comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. When we developed our testimony, my name is Jean Kefler, and I live at 1010 Swinley Road. When friends developed our testimony for you tonight, we found ourselves going back and forth between chapter 10 and chapter 12. Collaboration is, is pointless without implementation. And the, 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 the two chapters are so intertwined that you really do need to talk about them together. Our first recommendation relates to something I think that Stacy mentioned. The fact that appendix A is not actually included in chapter 12 in the matrix. We think it would be a good idea for, to literally put appendix A in that chapter 12 matrix. Our second recommendation concerns the timing of the implementation of the ETJ recommendations. We believe that the timeframe for adopting the recommendations should be distinguished from the timeframe for implementing them. This may seem a trivial point, but it's very important. We agree that one to 10 or more years to implement the ETJ land use regulations make sense. But appendix A will be meaningless if the regulations are not adopted for a decade. We recommend that the regulations be adopted in the next one to two years in your immediate column. If they're not adopted during the immediate period, then the sprawl that we see developing in Bozeman and elsewhere will get a head start. Our third recommendation concerns the timing for implementing the strategies in chapter three that have to do with reforming zoning and evaluating development against the smart growth principles. We've referenced the specific strategies in our written testimony. You can take a look at them later, but you will agree that they are at the heart of the city's ability to actually implement the entire growth policy. The matrix allows for five years for the implementation of those key strategies. We recommend two years. Five years from now, the growth policy should be undergoing its next update. That's too long to wait for reforming zoning and evaluating development against smart growth principles. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Carrie Call, I see your hand raised.
Thank you. This is Carrie Kale, and I live at 702 East Lewis Street here in Livingston. I have a very quick comment. I'm looking at, sorry, I'm reading off of one computer, so I get it straight here. I'm looking at strategy 6.1.5.2. That says develop a parking strategy and consider removing parking space minimums for downtown coding. We have it in the near term. I would recommend that we move that potentially to the immediate. If Commissioner Newt's was obviously at the city commission meeting last night and the ones previously. Parking in downtown has come up as an issue. City commission is looking at putting it on their agenda in the near future. And if we're going to talk about downtown parking with the businesses downtown and we're looking at this, really looking at living downtown, we probably need to talk about that all at the same time. So thinking that we would put that, move that up further. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, Jonathan Henger, I see your hand up. Name and address, please.
Yeah, Jonathan Henger, 519 West Park Street. I just had a few different comments about different strategies. So one was, I wasn't clear what was happening with strategy 3.1.1.9. It looks like it was added and then also deleted. So I just wanted to ask about what was happening with that. And then strategy 4.1.3.4, develop a climate plan. Was just thinking that the city conservation board has been tasked with doing that sooner rather than later, and I kind of thought that should maybe be in the immediate term rather than the near term, since that's in the strategic plan already. Strategy 8.2.2.3. I was thinking that that strategy, now that I was looking at it, when you talk about reevaluating and amending the 2017 North Side Transportation Plan, I honest, I feel like it's better to just scrap the North Side Transportation Plan than to reevaluate and amend it because of the way that the North Side Transportation Plan was done. It was using assumptions that, based on full growth of the north side and what traffic looked like. And, I mean, maybe it's just redoing a transportation plan, but I just like, based on the projections and the growth policy, but I just thought that that didn't quite make sense. And then the last comment was on page 135, when the city is talking about the city should update its lifecycle cost analysis. I was just thinking that a good way to summarize cost to taxpayer and greenhouse gas emissions would be to consider the social cost of carbon in those decisions, which would be a way to quantify both the tax, the cost of the taxpayer and greenhouse gas emissions. And I thought that would be a better way to do that. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on chapter 12? I don't see any hands raised, so if you want to raise your hand, go ahead or take yourself off mute. Second call for public comment on chapter 12. Last call. Okay, we're going to close public comment on chapter 12. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Matthew, did you have something?
Can I just add something? And I should have mentioned this prior, so I apologize for that. Even though all of the strategies are listed in chapter 12, this is not an opportunity for the planning board to reopen all of those strategies. They have been discussed already in the chapters that we have already discussed. We're basically just looking at the table and whether or not that is appropriate. We will discuss things that people would like to discuss again as the next item. The other thing, just for your information, there is also an implementation table included in appendix A in the ETJ to, for the timeframe to implement those goals as well. So I just wanted to point those two things out, and that is all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Matthew. Okay, um, thank you, public, for your written and verbal comments tonight. We appreciate it. Okay, planning board, who wants to start with chapter 12? Does anybody have anything for chapter 12, Melissa?
I don't want to start, and I will. I don't want to be the first, and I will be willing to be the first because I want to collaborate in a mutually beneficial way with all of you. Okay. So I am just going to flip through page by page of my notes. Okay, page 117. Just going to like be watching you all to make sure you're, I don't go too fast. Page 117, I'm on strategy 3.3.1.1. Near the bottom of the page. Are you guys with me? Stacy, are you with me also?
33, 3311.
Yep, it's down near the bottom.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So it says coordinate with local environmental groups to create inventory. You see that at the very beginning? I would amend it to say coordinate with local environmental groups and the Montana State Preservation Office to create inventory. Oh, Matthew's hand is up.
This is exactly what I'm talking about when I say this is not an opportunity to revisit all of the language and all the other goals.
So we already revisited this, okay.
Yeah, but that's language.
Thank you, Matthew.
Chapters, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. I just wanted to be an example for you to point out, so that's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, there's a couple of questions that have questions real quick. Stacy versus Tori, go ahead.
Okay, so, so does that mean you can comment on anything that isn't in red line? Or you can't comment on anything that's in any of these? And what, then what are we looking for?
I know, I'm going to say something else and be an example, so he can call me out if I did it wrong because I am happy to be that person. Thank you, Matthew. Okay. So allow me to keep moving through my notes. Okay. So I think that I can do this, and you tell me if I'm wrong. I'm on page 120. Oh, wait. Ready? Okay, so I'm on strategy 4.1.3.4. I would move that timeframe in the near future because the strategic plan does put the climate or energy action plan somewhere near the top of the priority list, like in the top five somewhere, I think. So I would move that to the immediate future.
I had that as well, and I will second that, Melissa.
Thank you, Taya. And I don't see any discouraging body language from Matthew. I see encouraging body language from him. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a question. So on there, you have, you said it was four point, the strategy or objective?
Strategy.
41, 41.
4, 1, 3, 4.
Oh, 4134. How come mine goes to three? Oh, there, develop a common change energy. Oh, I see. Okay, got it. I was one off, couldn't figure out why. Okay.
So I would shift that box to the left one column because it reflect, that way it matches our strategic plan, which already has it as a very high priority. Perfect. If you don't like it and you want us to push it back in time, you should come to a strategic plan meeting and say it's not important. I think. Okay.
Okay, any discussion around that particular motion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. And then Tori, I know you had your hand up, so I'm going to ask you what your question is next. I don't want you to think I'm ignoring you. Okay, Brian? Tori? Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And Jesse is four. Okay, really quickly, Melissa, I know Tori, you had your hand up with Stacy's hand. Do you have a question before Melissa continues?
Yeah, this would be for Matthew, I believe. And my question is, we, we are going to have an overview planning board meeting, right? At which time we can readdress some things that we have already voted on in the past? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, we're going to, so the next item on the agenda is items specifically you'd like to reevaluate. Obviously, when we do a full recommendation, that opens the whole growth policy. We do need to be careful because we did specific chapters at specific times, and the public expects that that chapter, once you've reevaluated a specific thing, that, that thing is finished. So it's reevaluating items that have already been voted on by the planning board is probably a more difficult question than things that have. a more difficult question than things that haven't been. Because once something gets voted on at that meeting, the public expected that to be the final outcome of that. But that last item is a full, full recommendation on the, on the growth policy.
Yeah, I guess I misvoted. I didn't mean to say specifically things that we voted on, but chapters that we've covered and basically chapters that we've covered and goals or strategies that went unchanged.
I'm going to ask you to be very specific in the next item, so we don't reopen the entirety of the growth policy because we do need to finish. But we'll discuss this in the next, on the next agenda item.
To put everyone at ease, I have nothing in mind. I was curious about the process.
Okay, thank you for the clarifying question, Melissa. You have the floor back.
Thank you. I'm going to keep scurrying through my notes. Okay. Okay, now I'm on page 125, so I flipped a few pages. Watching your faces. Stacy, are you with?
Yeah, what strategy?
Okay, 6.1.5.2. This was a comment that Carrie brought up about parking strategies. And she is 100% correct that we are already talking about it at the commission. Thank you, Carrie. So I will make a motion, we bump that rectangle over to the left into the immediate future since we've been talking about it regularly for quite some time.
Okay, do we have a second? I'm going to second. That's Jesse. That'll be me. Okay, let's, anybody have any discussion on that one? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
Jesse is four. Okay, motion passes. What's next?
Just, I'm scanning, just a second. Okay. Now I'm past our spreadsheet and back to the horizontal view. To page 135. Okay, so I'm in the top section, the part that's in red. Do you see the bullet point where it says greenhouse gas emissions? I would add and energy use because greenhouse gas emissions is not the only way to measure what we're looking at in this section. Sometimes energy use is a more effective measurement. An example would be Bitcoin operations. They might have low greenhouse gas emissions but use a ton of energy. So it can, it can just throw off the system when you're thinking about from a utility perspective. So I would, I want to make a motion to add, for the greenhouse gas emissions, add and energy use.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that Tori? Yeah, okay. Any conversation around that one? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
Okay, and I'm four. That one passes.
I'm still my turn. Okay, I would add another bullet point. This is brought up in public comment, and I, it's considered the social cost of carbon. Another reason to add that is it gets at this equity issue that we've been talking about in many different sections of this growth policy. It's just another way of like looking at equity across our community. So my motion is to add the point, consider the social cost of carbon.
That same section is red. Yep, another bullet point.
Oh, so you want to add a bullet point?
That's correct. Add the bullet point, consider the social cost of carbon.
Second again.
Any discussion on that one? Okay.
I guess I just. I guess I just wanted to know exactly what you meant by that, Melissa. Other than the social cost of carbon, what, what do you mean? What are you after on that?
It's just another way to look at, it's, we've been talking about equity a lot in this document, and it's another way to get at equity.
I don't see how that gets to equity.
Tori, I'm going to look at you because I know you probably have actually done your graduate work, like touching on some of this. Can you explain this, like?
The way that I understand that term has to do with capturing the externalities of burning fossil fuels. So greenhouse gas emissions is just one, but there's lots of, there are lots of costs that aren't included in the price at the gas tank of people, of peoples and buildings uses of, of petrochemicals. And so it's, it's a holistic way of considering the impacts of, of the use of of fossil fuels, which includes, and this specifically mentions the, the social element. So an example would be the costs on communities living in low-lying coastal areas of emissions and carbon, carbon use. There's, there's many examples beyond that, but that's one.
Thank you for helping with that. Another example that just came to mind would be when different industry comes to Livingston or around Livingston, and which neighborhoods that industry impacts, it's not particularly equitable usually. It usually hurts certain parts of town more than other parts of town. And that's, you know, that's a trend that happens all over the country, not just in Montana. So it's just like, I think when you, when the city is looking at acquisitions and investments, making, making sure that they're including like people really, and how it impacts the people in town, is like how I think about it.
So Melissa's Brian, quick, quick question. So do we want to just maybe be more, maybe just more general in our equity term instead of tying it to one particular subject? I mean, if, if, if we're going to say equity is a theme throughout the growth policy, I mean, can we just say, ensure equity or something like that instead of tying it to carbon, for example? Because it, because there's probably different ways of measuring equity, not just really that, I guess.
And I do think we were actually kind of conflating social cost of carbon is, equity is a consideration in that evaluation, in that criteria, but it's not, that's not the whole, it doesn't it's not all about equity. Equity is actually kind of a broader construct, which might be more applicable, so. Your point's well taken, Brian.
It, it seems to me that, that, that these words are just buzzwords that people might understand now, but I don't think they are clarifying what your intent is.
What do you think, then, what do you think a better way to say the attempt is?
I don't have one, I guess.
From what I heard from Melissa, I heard Melissa really touching on environmental justice and equity. And again, the social cost of carbon considers those things, but it's a little bit more specific. And I think that if we were to amend, amend the motion to, to say something about environmental justice and equity, that might be, might be a better way to put it.
Okay. So I'm torn because like this idea of like a buzzword, like I feel like if you were to go back, you know, a decade, somebody would say greenhouse gas emissions was a buzzword when it was a thing that just not everybody was working on or talking about. So just because things are like maybe new to people in Livingston, but they're not new other places, doesn't make it not relevant here. So I'm torn because there's more than one way to measure it. Carbon is just one way. But I also agree with Tori that I am really like what's really important is environmental justice and equity. Does anybody else have thoughts on this? I don't want to get stuck on this.
Yeah, could you put that as a bullet point? Would that defeat the essence of the carbon piece if you said environmental justice? I'm sorry, say it again. It was three words.
Environmental justice and equity is just, the thing with environmental justice and equity is it's a lot like bigger, broader concept that's like less measurable, and the social cost of carbon is actually like data points.
Yeah.
And so and so that's why it's like, how do you measure environmental justice and equity? You know, like one way is probably with the social cost of carbon. So that's where I'm stuck is like, we have all these examples of like data, cost to the taxpayer, you know, measuring greenhouse gas emissions or energy use, water use reduction, those are all measurable, quantifiable things. Environmental justice and equity are less.
Is not, okay.
Well, they're, they're like more qualitative to me and less quantitative in a way. I don't know.
I was going to say.
I've got a suggestion.
Sorry, go ahead, Taya.
I was just going to say, I, I carbon, it's like Melissa said, it is measurable, and those things listed there are things that, that you would measure to then inform next steps.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
I know this is probably getting away from where you really want to head, but we spent a lot of time at the beginning of all of this on sense of community. And trying to identify what our, what our sense of community, what our, what our community values are. And, and, and environmental justice is, is part of that and is important to some elements of the community, not to others. So I think maybe if we, if we're going to be, if we're going to qualify versus quantify, I think I would stick with the terms that we've already kind of spent a lot of time trying to identify. And so I would say, instead of saying, you know, one of those just, and it's, it fits our community, our sense of community and our, and our, our character that, that we identified early on. I do think environmental justice is a bit of a loaded word. And so I'm apprehensive to put that in there. So I'm trying to find a word that, you know, captures, that everybody can convalesce around or kind, kind of, and I think that's that sense of community or that, or that character, common human, community character that we're all trying to strive for.
So I just want to make the point that we have a motion in a second and no motions for amendments. So can we just vote and keep going forward? Okay, thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate it.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on this one. Brian?
Against.
Tori? Stacy?
No.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon? He said four, I saw it. I read his lips. Yeah. Did you say four?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't want to mess that up. Melissa?
Four.
Okay, and I am also four. So that motion passes. Okay. Melissa, do you have another?
I just have a question for Matthew. So I'm, now I'm on page 136, and this, can you explain just for a second this reviewing and amending timetable that says begins January 2023, like what that means?
Basically, it's recommending that we initiate an update process in 2023, and it's just sort of laying out the, the timeframes for the steps of that process. Again, I would consider that very loose, but basically it's, here's what the amendment process should look like, and here's generally how long each step of that process will take.
So it's just more like the plan moving forward. It's not like we'll start in 2023. It's like we'll start reviewing in 2023, kind of like the strategic plan is a living document that's always being updated. Like the growth policy is also a living document that will continue to be updated.
Yes, specific, so the growth policy can be amended at any time, and it's a living document. This is specifically recommending that we initiate a full-scale update of the growth policy in three years. And then it is laying out that process. So that's a little bit different than just amending it. It's completely reevaluating whether or not we need to update, whether we need a new growth policy, what needs to be changed for the whole document.
That's fantastic, and I just, I just want to thank you for explaining that. And, you know, I think the friends, the friends, the friends of Park County brought up a good point about the implementation strategies. And I know, here's my opportunity to use relentless. We have a relentless commission and relentless staff that are doing a ton of stuff right now. They are working at an insane level for an extended period of time. And so I don't know that we can shorten the time windows on some things, because I just don't, I physically don't know that it can happen with only 24 hours in a day. And so what I would hope for is that as the growth policy is adopted and moves forward, that people continue to come to meetings to, to really communicate what the most important thing they're seeing is and what they want to be prioritized in the strategic plan. I think that's probably going to be the most effective way to keep things moving forward rather than shortening the window and then in two years being upset if not all the things happened. I think it's just like persistent, persistence at meetings is how we move things forward. There was one thing that Jonathan brought up, do you remember it, Matthew, that was like put in and then taken out? It was one of the strategies. Can you address that really quick before we move on?
Yes, I absolutely can. There was a strategy suggested by staff, and I can't quite remember what it was. But the planning board decided to recommend striking that strategy. And I can quickly scroll through here, and I think it was three.
3.1.
I got 3.1.9, yeah. I remember the discussion very distinctively.
Page 117, yep.
Yep, yeah. So basically, it was suggested to be added by staff and then suggested to be unadded, I guess, by the planning board. So that's why it looks like that.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right. I remember that.
Yep.
Stacy, thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else? Brian?
I just have one. I'm, I'm easy. Page 117, and it's strategy 3.2.2.1, initiate a comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance and adopt changes based on the growth policy. Sort of like Melissa said, there's only so many hours in the day. But if I was going to say the most, one of the most important strategies out of this entire growth policy is that one. I think because getting our zoning right is going to determine a lot of things for us. So I would like to move that down to one to two years. I don't know if that's possible with the laws of physics, but I would like to make that a stretch call. So I make a motion to reduce that from intermediate one to two, three to five, to intermediate only one to two years.
I'll second that.
Brian, I'll actually agree with that because that was one thing that started happening as soon as Matthew was hired. Like he's already doing that. That's another one of those things. Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier, but. he already started. So it's happening.
You got two hour, two, two years starting right now.
Wait, when were you? Almost done?
It would, no, it's the plan though, in the strategic plan, isn't it? Um, when Math, as soon as Matthew was hired, he and Jim were going to start working on a total code rewrite that they predicted would take a couple of years, I think. So I think that's already in the works, isn't it? Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Any more discussion on that one? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori? Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon? You're muted.
I know, I'm torn on this one because I mean, I, this thing is overwhelming. And to put a two-year deadline on something that comprehensive, I'm struggling with, but I'll I'll vote for it.
Matthew looks stressed. Okay. All right, Melissa?
Four.
And I guess I'll be four. That one motion passes. Um, Brian, that was it for you? You have another one? You're good? Anybody else?
I have a question. This is another from the public comment. I guess I understand where the friends are coming up with trying to get more collaboration between the cities' policies and the ETJ policies. So I guess I just wanted to know, is it possible to list the end results in two places? Is it possible to list the implicated? The goals, I'm getting tired. I can't think straight. Of the ETJ at the end of this chapter, or is that being redundant or?
Sounds redundant.
It's being redundant.
Because it's already in there and it's gonna, it's it's covered. They they have their own, because it's its own appendix, they have their own uh, implementation table. So I think that would be redundant. And we've already covered uh, the timing of when those those goals and objectives should happen.
Okay, I I I can see where, because it's considered an appendix and it's just kind of off in its own entity, which it is its own entity, but it is part of the policy. So instead of making it kind of a stepchild, there's trying to make it be part of the whole unit too. And I guess there isn't any better way than keeping it as an appendix, but just wanted to throw that out there.
I think one of the goals we talked about last chapter was, um, you know, that goal of implementing the ETJ. So making sure it's it's its own entity, but it's also part of the growth policy and that we are directed by the growth policy to implement the goals that are included in that appendix. Um, and then it gives us a timeframe for that. So I think it's pretty well covered.
Okay. Actually, I have a question on that. Stacy, do you mind if I pop in real?
Oh, no, that's all.
And maybe I'm just, maybe I'm spacing out too because it's late. But so basically the ETJ implementation is in their appendix. Jean's concern was it said, uh, adopting the regulation was out, was was not in the immediate and she was requesting it to be in the immediate. Is is that, I realize we're not talking about the ETJ implementation plan now, but and I have not looked, so I'm not prepared, but would that be something that we would consider revisiting in our discussion or revisiting items part? Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you. That's my question. Anybody else have anything uh, they want to talk about for chapter twelve? Going once. Going twice. We're good on chapter twelve, everybody. Holy cow. That was our last chapter of the growth policy. Woo! Oh, wow. All right, good job. Moving on, is everybody, does anybody need, it is nine oh eight. Let's give this a go, shall we? Can we, do we, yeah, thank you. Let's go. Okay. We do have to take public comment on the next agenda item, which is the growth policy review, discussion on revisiting items. Anything you want to say, Matthew, before we go? Go for it.
Yes, um, just to continue that discussion uh, with Tori. What I would really like to see from this discussion, um, because we do have limited time and the commission has asked you to make a recommendation at the next meeting, uh, which was basically the deadline. I'm hoping that you will all have a discussion on very specific items that you want to revisit. And by specific, I mean down to like the paragraph or section or strategy itself. Rather than reopening the entire growth policy, so we can make sure that we leave ourselves enough time to revisit items and to make a recommendation. If we are very specific in what we are looking at, we can put that on the agenda and then the discussion can be limited to that item. I also want you to be cognizant on how many items you place to revisit. This has been now a eight-month process of reviewing the growth policy. Putting every single item we didn't talk about back onto the agenda. I don't think is the wisest move. Obviously, you all can make that decision amongst yourselves. But I do, I just want to impress upon you that we do have uh, time constraints at this point. And I don't believe it's appropriate to reevaluate items that have already been voted on by the planning board. Just because the expectation from the public was that those items were decided at that time. There's been a few public comments asking us to revisit items. I I don't think that is the the correct thing to do. Um, obviously, you all can discuss that amongst yourselves and make that decision as well. And in regards to what Tori asked, when we do make a recommendation, it's sort of fair game for anyone to talk about whatever they want at that point because you are making a recommendation to the city commission. Um, and for your knowledge and for the public's knowledge, uh, there will be at least two more hearings before the city commission to uh, take public comment and and reopen any items that the city commission would like to discuss. Uh, I think that is all I have. Hopefully, I've covered everything uh, I wanted to cover there and otherwise we can open it up for public comment.
Anybody have any questions for Matthew before we open it up? Melissa?
Did you say eight, did you say eight months?
It's somewhere in there. It's late, so I don't even want to estimate, but I think we started in November or October.
Over.
October.
So we're
October.
Yeah, it's
So we started twice a month since October. Is that how long it's been?
I, I think, yeah, we may have started twice a month in in December. When we had
It's before then.
October.
So we've met, yeah, so you're looking at six months of two meetings a month, four and a half meetings each time. So uh, yeah, that's a lot of hours, probably eighty hours at least, not to mention all the time you all have put in behind the scenes doing this, reading all the public comments, reading all my memos, which are never short. So again, thank you all for all of the time. And uh, yeah, congratulations on getting through all of the chapters.
And when did you start working here?
Uh, July first of twenty twenty.
Moving on.
That's really good. No, it's good to reflect. It's really good to reflect on how long this has taken us before we decide what to revisit because we've spent more time on this than anything. Thank you for this, Melissa.
My mind's spinning. Has it been that long? Okay. Uh, we gotta do public comment. So let's do that. Anybody else have any more questions before we do that? Okay. Public, we're going to open up uh, the agenda item discussion on revisiting items. Please limit your public comment to that agenda item. Again, you will have three minutes to comment. Your name and address. Jonathan, I see your hand.
Yep, Jonathan Hedinger, five nineteen West Park Street. Um, yeah, I just really would like for um, the housing a lot of those numbers to be revisited. I know we've had, there's been a lot of discussion about how things are changed, about how it's hard to incorporate real-time data and it's hard to incorporate changes. And I think the new introduction's really great, but I just think if you look at table five point three, that does not reflect the Livingston that we now are in, where of median home value is two hundred twenty four thousand. Medium rent is eight hundred and thirteen dollars. That is just not realistic. And I just really think that that's something that um, I I would like for that to be revisited. And I just wanted to say that once again. And then um, I'll just bring up the chapter air eight point two point two point three, what I'll reiterate what I said earlier about the Northside Transportation Plan. That I don't think that that is appropriate to amend. I think it'd be better to just start anew. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Jean, I see your your um, hand up. Uh, Jean Keppler, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do have a comment. I I have a suggestion. Consider all of the work that you did expressing your firm intent of a collaborative process. And then for some of you, you felt that reciprocity could have the implication of you know, wheeling and dealing or quid pro quo. And I thought, as I was listening to you, that if you would add the words in the pursuit of implementing the growth policy objectives, it would tighten it up that, you know, the purpose of collaboration is is not for its own sake or for self-dealing, but it's in the pursuit of implementation. So just wanted to, of of our specific goals, our specific goals, just wanted to offer that as a suggestion you might consider.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Any other public comment? Second call for public comment. Last call, public comment for revisions and discussion. Okay, we're closing public comment. Thank you all very much. Board, who wants to start on discussion on revisiting items?
I'll start.
Okay.
I have a couple. I guess the, I'm just gonna start from the beginning. In the introduction, we received a word of the official language, uh, official name, the Native American language word for Crow and for Shoshone. So I'm not sure if this has to be, Matthew, does this need to be added to revisit or is this an editing thing? To add the actual names?
We will need to revisit that because we're adding additional language to the to the growth policy.
Okay. Um, so my um, suggestion was just to revisit the addition of the the Native American language name for Crow and Shoshone. Also, in the introduction, at the end, it was inadvertently omitted to add housing for remote workers out of county mining, Yalesdale National Park and other out-of-county employers. We did cover that later on and it is somewhere else, but it fit, it was originally intended to also be in the introduction. Add in strategy three point five.
Hold on one second. Do we need, does she need to make a motion on the change just to the introduction first and then move, or is that how this is working?
Yeah, I didn't know how you you wanted to know what we were.
Bisected, maybe?
I would like to know what you all would like to talk about and then we will cover it specifically at the next meeting. Um, it would be helpful for me and the public for you to vote on if you want to rediscuss these items. Uh, Stacy's aims are pretty specific. So we potentially could just have a vote on them right now if you are all comfortable uh, with that. It just depends on sort of how how specific we're going to get on on the revisits and how many of them are there. I know it's getting late.
I'm kind of curious to hear how many more people are going to bring up before we start voting on them. That's just my preference is to hear like an overview of what people are going to bring up before we, you know what I mean?
Yep. I don't have any.
Tori, you said none, correct?
I just had one regarding um, a public comment that we had received regarding the Ninth Street Island and its designation.
So Ninth Street Island, which is one of those things we voted on already, is not open for for rediscussion just because there's an expectation that that decision has been made.
Then I have zero.
Shannon, did you have any? Melissa, do you have any?
Well, I want to hear, I want to hear what other people say before I come back around to the public product.
Okay, I've seen your list, Stacy. Uh, I popped in and saw it uh, with Matthew. You have a few, but nothing me. And I, the only one I was just thinking about um, was the one uh, Jean mentioned about the uh, timeline for adopting the ETJ implementation versus um, the implementation of the that was the only one I was thinking about bringing up and I'm happy to discuss that next time because I'm not prepared to know what I'm talking about because I haven't looked at it and it's nine thirty at night. But that's the only one I was thinking about bringing up.
And can I just say what the other two were that I had? Okay, the other two were um, adding the Chamber of Commerce to chapter three to a certain strategy that listed businesses. Um, and the other one was changing the to medium density designation on the land use map along the rivers to fill in where we didn't fill it all the way in. When we originally did it, we left out some sections um, over by O Street and some added sections by Ninth Street. So that was it.
So, and I'm actually looking at this because I took a picture of it. I think we, you know, it seems to me like we could probably just make a motion on your introduction. Well, uh, and just knock that one out real quick. Does that sound reasonable? Look. Let's do that. Do you want to make a motion on your? Okay.
Sorry, clarification. So we're just making a motion that this is going to be a discussion topic at the next meeting.
I think, should we do that or can we, these are just like quick changes or?
Well, I think the general public has to be involved with these, right, Matthew?
All right, so let's make a motion.
So I would do is a motion that this is really, so what we're basically doing is taking a motion that these things are going to be on the agenda at the next meeting for discussion and and discussion and potential approval by the board.
Okay. Sounds good.
We have
Can I ask?
Will we have to open up to public comment individually for each thing that we covered? Okay, well.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know. What'd you say? One, you didn't mention?
I have three.
Okay.
Because the others, the others been done. I got that question answered. The introduction is one, that's all one in one area. So that would be one area. Adding the Chamber of Commerce is one strategy. So you would just open up the strategy. And the one on the density issue is, again, that's a certain strategy. It would just be limited to that one topic, that one. It would just be limited to that one topic, that one.
So it's two strategies and a change to the intro.
Mm-hmm. That's the point is.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So Matthew, when you set up the agenda, you would be referencing a specific paragraph, for example, and that's all we get to talk about is that one paragraph? Right?
Yes. So what I have right now, just for clarity, we're reopening the intro. And one strategy for in Chapter 3, and then by modifying the future land use map, basically opening anything that already hasn't, hasn't already been changed or voted on in the future land use map to revision.
So those are the three things we're gonna vote on tonight to add to the agenda next time. Okay, great. Stacy, hit it. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
And if you don't, so if you don't want to talk about it at the next meeting, you vote no.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I make a motion to add the words crow, the official words for crow and Shoshone names to the introduction. Can I do the other introduction one, or does it have to be just one at a time?
Just do the whole introduction, basically, since you want to open multiple things.
Okay. I move that we revisit the introduction of the growth policy.
Brian seconded, okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa?
Four.
And Jesse's four. Okay, motion passes.
Okay. My next one is strategy. I move to open up discussion on strategy 3.5.4.1 to add to the list of businesses, Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, is there a second?
Brian, second.
Any comment from the board? Okay, let's vote.
We're just opening, we're just opening up the strategy to discuss. We're not voting on that specific word change. Yeah.
Right. Yes, correct. Okay, Brian?
Four.
Tori? Sorry, you're muted. Was it, is that a thumbs up?
Four.
Four. Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Melissa?
Four.
And I'll be four. Okay. What's your last one, Stacy?
My last one was to open up discussion on the land use map on the median density designation along the river. Is that broad enough? For discussion?
Basically, you just need to, we'll just be re-discussing the future land use map. Anything that's not already been voted on can be included under that.
Okay. Is there a second on that one?
Brian, a second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa?
Four.
Okay, and I'll be four. Did you have another one, Stacy?
No, that's it. Yep.
Okay. The one I wanted, I'm sorry, does anybody else have one? Okay, I would like to make, to make a motion to revisit the appendix, the implementation plan for the ETJ. Is that right? Yeah, thank you. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Any discussion on that? Okay, let's do it. Brian?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa?
Four.
Okay, and I'm four. Perfect. Motion passes. Anybody else have anything they want to do in this section before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, four, four of them. Nice. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to, I just want to acknowledge that everything that the public brought up, I think we already had on the agenda specifically talked about and voted on. So it sounds like maybe the best plan if people want to see this. You know, like for housing prices, it had to do with like where information comes from. So, and for Northside Transportation Plan, we already talked about looking at it, and then we just voted on the collaboration part. Some of it might just have to happen in the review process or when new data comes out, since we already talked about it and voted on it. So people should bring it up again. That's what I would, unless Matthew has a different response.
Yeah, I think that's correct. And because there's a commission process to adoption as well, people are certainly welcome to, to re-bring up any item they would like to, to the commission. And the commission can certainly make the decision that they would like to make those changes as well.
And Matthew, that's in, that's in a meeting in May. If people want to find out when that happens, it's gonna be probably at a May commission meeting.
It will likely be the second meeting in May. There are state notice requirements for all of those meetings. The, since we're talking about it, it's a 10-day notice for planning board. So the notice for the next meeting where you all make a recommendation will be in the paper on Friday. But yeah, we're looking at mid-May and probably mid-June as well for those two hearings.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, great. Closing the, that agenda item, and the next agenda item is readability. Matthew, you want to throw in info on that one?
Yep, very quickly. Yeah, I think the two big complaints we had heard with readability was the, the strategy goals and objective numbering and that the ETJ page numbering not being differentiated was confusing. We dealt with both of those. I'm happy to entertain any other readability items. Things that we really can't do at this point is a full-scale re-graphic design of the whole growth policy. Things like that are kind of set in stone at this point. But other than that, I'm happy to open it to the public and you.
Okay, great. Do you guys have any questions for Matthew before we open it up?
I have a question. So I, I skip, I noticed every week I noticed copy editing errors, but I didn't think that. I didn't think we needed to add to our four-hour meetings about that. And so there, I, I found them relatively pervasive throughout the, throughout the document. Can you, I'm hoping that's something you can give back to the consultants to take care of, Matthew.
Yeah, and we will talk about that at the next agenda item, which is cleanup. But yeah, basically, I'm going through, the consultant will go through, we will try to pull as many of those as possible out of there. I'm hoping it'll be a little bit easier with a, with a clean copy rather than the strike-through underline, which makes it really tough. But I, I did a first pass last week, so we'll continue on that to make sure. We'll pull as many of those out as possible. If you all see them, please send them to me, and I will make those changes. I, there's a lot of references to things like 2020 in there that all need to be changed as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, great. Anybody else before we open it up? Okay, we're gonna start public comment on the next agenda item, which is the readability. Please note that Matthew did put a couple of comments in the memo about these specific agenda items. So if you, you know, if you want to take a look at those, they're helpful. Okay, we're opening up public comment readability of three minutes. Please state your name and your address, and you can raise your hand as well. And go. I don't see any hands. Second call for public comment on readability. Okay, last call for public comment on the readability agenda item. Okay, no public comment. Board, any thoughts on readability? Yep, go ahead.
I want to thank Matthew for the work he's done on this and express my frustration that a draft with this many challenging errors came to us for review. I think that like the really obvious things like numbering and page numbers, I, I think that shouldn't have made it through to us. I think that should have been fixed before it came to us. So I really appreciate you taking the time, Matthew, to clean this up and make it a better final version. For the price it costs, I just think we should have got a better draft to look at. Thank you. And that could be, you know, my English debris talking right there, but that'll be it.
Thanks, Melissa. Um, you know, I had one thought just really quickly, and it was from a public comment that came from Barb in the housing section like a long time ago. And she's, and I think, I can't remember if we discussed it or not, so please help me out here. But it was like moving the land use section next to natural resource section or something. It was like moving a, a chapter closer, and I don't have my chapters in front of me, but does anybody kind of recall that public comment and, and the flow of the chapters moving land used to be closer to? And was it natural resources? It was, it was, um.
Chapter 11 and Chapter 4 went next to, we did them at the same time. And it was Chapter 4 and Chapter 11.
So it was.
Is that what you're talking about?
I think so. And it was making Chapter 11, Chapter 5, and then pushing it back. Do you guys recall that?
I don't recall the comment, but it made more sense.
Yeah. That would be one comment I would make about the readability and the flow of the document is, is changing land use recommendations to come after Chapter 4. Any thoughts, concerns, questions about? It's intriguing.
Was there, was there any rationale as to the order that Burton picked, or is this just from his template? That's just how they always do it.
Assumption, and obviously I can't tell you the actual rationale. Chapter 11 is not formatted in the same format. It doesn't follow that goals, objectives, and strategies format. So it was put at the end of, basically at the end of those chapters, so there isn't a, a break in format through, through the document.
Okay. Anybody feel strongly about making that change for, for the readability of it? Does it bug anybody? Okay. I'm not worried about it either, but I did remember for readability, that was something that I thought we could talk about. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about or suggest for readability? We love how this reads. We are good. Yes? Can we, can we just move on? Okay, great. Where are we? Cleanup. We're gonna talk about cleanup. Matthew, you want to say anything about your memo real quick?
Yes. First thing, I think out of all of those meetings that we just talked about, this is the first time we've gotten through the full agenda, so congratulations on that. Nothing too complicated with cleanup. I've been going through, as I just mentioned to Tori, and trying to pull out the errors. The first pass, I sat with my headphones on in my chair and probably spent two workdays on it. I will do that again after we, basically after this meeting. I will hopefully have a clean copy, which will make it easier. I will make sure Burton is working on it as well. If anyone wants to help us out and submit errors to me, I am more than happy for you to do that, and that includes the planning board and the members of the public that have toughed it out this far. Anyone is welcome to send me a list of typos that they see. Other than that, I don't think there's particularly anything that you all need to do with that. It'll mostly be a consultant and staff process to make sure that once it gets adopted by the commission, it is as error-free as possible for what is now a 500-page document.
Okay. Any comments from Matthew before we open it up to the public? Okay, all right, public comment. We are about to open the agenda item cleanup. For those of you who have stuck it out, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to comment on the cleanup agenda item. Any public comment? I know you guys have all read the 500-page document and have. Okay, second call for public comment on cleanup. All right, last call, public comment on cleanup. All right, we're closing public comment. Thank you. Okay, growth policy review for next meeting. See staff memorandum for updated schedule. We don't, we have the schedule. We know what we're gonna do. We know when it's gonna be posted. Any other comments from anybody about anything before we adjourn?
I just got a quick question for Matthew.
Yep.
How soon will you have the next draft done if you're looking for help on cleanup?
As soon as possible. Burton has been doing a great job of getting me the updated document basically by the next Wednesday, and I'm extremely grateful for how quickly they're doing that. The, the clean version, I think, is probably gonna take longer. I'm not sure. But I can definitely have, or at least try to have a, a strike-through underline copy by next week sometime.
So the copy that folks can look at to offer feedback to you on typos and stuff, that'll be ready like in a week for us to look at?
Yeah.
And then?
You can always use the current, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. You can always start with the current copy until that one's ready. And then how quickly do you need the feedback so that you'll be ready for the next meeting? Because that's like a really short window then to turn it around for two weeks.
Uh, yeah, and it may be that they're noted, and then the, the actual cleanup, the actual draft won't be ready until the commission. So that may be the process that we just note that any typos that I don't find and pass it on to the commission with an improved version, basically.
Can, can I just ask then, right now that you sent an email to the planning board as soon as you have the clean copy ready, and then those of us that are ready to start rereading it again for the bajillionth time can reply to you?
Absolutely do that.
Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate all the work you're doing on this.
So I just have one other comment, I guess. I, I think, Matthew, you went over this, but I just want to make sure that everybody else is aware of. And I was just looking on your memorandum, and it isn't on there. We have a meeting on the 21st. Then if I heard you right, the two meetings, the city commission meetings are in May, that it goes in front of for two public commit, public hearings. Is that correct?
The first one will be in May. I'm gonna have to look at the notice requirements, but I think it'll be May, the second meeting in May anyway, because I'm going to have to put together an absolutely massive staff report packet that will probably end up being about 1,000 pages long and write a staff report. So that's gonna take a little while. And then the second one should be the second meeting in June based on that schedule.
So that, that's the third Thursday, so that's like June 15. Is the third Tuesday of June, is that basically kind of the next commission meeting? So at the end of the second hearing, is that when, at that meeting, is that when the city commission then votes to accept or not accept the recommendation? Or is it another meeting after that?
Nope, this, they can, they can accept it at the second meeting. Obviously, the commission has the option to, to table the item or continue it to allow more time and more hearings. That's up to them. But they are, basically, the first meeting is. But they are, basically the first meeting is a, an initiation of the update and the second meeting will be an adoption.
And who presents it to the commission? Does Melissa? Or is it just in the packet?
They'll be in the packet. It'll follow the standard procedure, so it'll be introduced by the city manager. And he will likely hand it off to me to discuss. Obviously, Commissioner Newt's will be there in her commissioner form and she can inform the commission of the process as well. Part of the reasoning for having a commissioner on this board is to allow that commissioner to report back to the, to the city commission on items that have gone through the planning board. But it will be staff that will present the staff report and drafts to the, to the commission.
Okay, and if it is approved at the second meeting, then when does it go into effect? Or is there like July 1 date or is it in effect as soon as it's passed or 30 days or? Or what?
I think it's as soon as it's passed, but I'd have to look at the, the language. I don't think there is any sort of appeal period in state statute, but I, I haven't memorized it off the top of my head.
Can I add to what you just said? So Stacy, as a commissioner, like I've been sharing updates in the commissioner comments with the rest of the commission about our progress and how we're doing. And I'll, and I'll still speak, you know, I'll still share things with them at the commission meeting, but I'm not the chair of this board. So actually, in the past, the board chair also comes to the meeting. So it would be great if Jesse wanted to come as well, since she's you know, in that role on this board and she, often the chair of boards, whatever the border committee is that we're voting on their work. They often come and share as well or available to the commission to answer questions. But given the scope of this document, Matthew's probably going to be answering a lot of the questions.
And so it's May 7th and May 19th.
Well, I think.
Two meetings we're talking about. No, oh, shoot. Sorry, I'm like sleeping over there.
May 18th.
May.
May 18th and June 15th. So that's why I was writing them down, just so that we had an idea of what the process was. Well, Melissa, I think.
Just so you know, those are tentative dates. I will definitely let you all know what the specific dates are when we get there. You all need to make a recommendation first, so let's, uh, let's cross that bridge.
Focus on that. Good call, good call, which we will be making on the 21st of April.
Right.
What else did you want to say to me, Stacy?
Oh, I was just going to say that I thought that as a collective board, we had done an awesome job. That's all.
I think so too. I think so too. And I think I've been saying that, hopefully I'm not too tired that I've been forgetting. And then, and Shannon and Matthew also come to all the city commission meetings, pretty much all of them. So they're doing double duty also. Just like I am with, and some of these folks in the public that are coming to everything. So there's been a good handful of people deeply invested.
Okay. Awesome. Any other closing comments before we head off? Okay, I'm going to also echo, just thank you so much. I am so proud of us for getting through the agenda this evening before 10:00 PM. We did it. It is 9:46. Thank you all very much. Thank you to the public. Thanks to the planning board, the city staff. We really appreciate everybody's efforts. We've got a heck of a document. So we should be really proud. Woo-hoo. Woo-hoo.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
We're done, 9:47.
Bye.
Good night, thank you.
Bye.